Good afternoon, Happy New Year. Welcome to the 23rd meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your cell phone. If you're here appearing before the commission, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission reporter. If you're here testifying, please come forward. Be sworn in, introduce yourself and spell your name again for the commission reporter. Commissioners, we have some minutes to take action on.
Yes Chair, motion for the approval of the regular and executive session meeting minutes of the 17th meeting, second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the 17th meeting are approved. Moving into the public hearing, agenda item number one, application number 18-13321 from Isley Livery Inc.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of commission, great news. Your companion behalf of the applicant to my right is James Simpson, S-I-M-P-S-O-N-D, my principal for the company.
Thank you, Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This matter was continued from the December 13th meeting. Public hearing kept open. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October 18th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Mia Shero prior to the December 13th public hearing date. And all five commissioners were present for the December 13th public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to testify for or against this application? Please come forward, sir.
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna swear you in.
My name is Victor Lim.
You swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please have a seat.
Yes.
Okay, please.
I will run a three-minute clock.
Ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Victor Lim. I'm the immediate past president of United Chinese Society, which is the landlord for the set applicant. And I'm also the chair for the Fourth Street Law Business Improvement District. And I'm also a local businessman here in Ta'w. I'm here to let you know that we as the landlords up there have a very positive opinion of the basically business. They are nowhere similar to our previous tenant that we had a lot of problems with. And I just want to let you folks know that we as the United Chinese Society really fully support what they're trying to do. I think it's gonna be an improvement towards our downtown Chinatown area. And I just want to let you know our opinion. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
No, very good. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Chong Yifan Choi?
That's the next one.
Almost, almost. Almost put my foot in my mouth like that, huh? Do it the white way, not the wrong way. Okay, Commissioners? Can we have a motion to continue this matter until we deal with agenda item number 43?
Yes Chair, motion to continue. Agenda item number one to the end of agenda item number 42. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number 18-13321 is continued to after agenda item number 43.
And public kept open.
And the public hearing, thank you Ms. Rai. Public hearing is to be kept open. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number two, application number 18-14249 from Root LLC. Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon, tour right is Dana Thaian, N-A-N-A, her last name is T-H-A-I-N. She is the agent for the Root LLC. The director of Wayne Lucas Council. We have no changes to the investigator's.
Thank you, Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 8th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Mr. Lu, the space was previously occupied by what tenant? Do you know?
Who?
This is on 11th Avenue, correct?
Yeah, it was a hostess bar.
Okay, this is on the second floor?
The second floor, yes.
And it's facing the road or facing the parking lot?
Both.
Both, so there's an entrance from the parking lot side and the roadside?
Oh yeah, the first floor, yes.
But your tenant's space, does it face the parking lot? Windows, does it face the parking lot? The door, or does it face the road?
There's both entrances on both sides, so...
You can come from 11th Avenue over the parking lot.
Okay, and what about the windows? Windows are facing both sides as well?
Windows are on the street side?
This is right near the 10th Avenue?
Turn across, Kavakipark.
Kavakipark, correct?
Actually, I have one question. The Bistro L, is that the same menu that you provided? Is that the name of the company, or is it the Root LLC?
This is what we provided you.
So the Root LLC?
Yes, later on you'll have the name.
You're gonna have a name?
Change.
Um, if you need for Bistro, okay.
Okay, motion to approve application number 18-14249. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number 18-14249 is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck. Calling agenda item number three, application number 19-14905 from Morgan Mellow Enterprises. Good afternoon. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Benita Cilio,
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to review the investigator's report? You are the owner?
No, I'm the general manager. I just got it.
Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 8th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number 19-14905. Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 19-14905 is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number four, application number 19-14981 from Y&amp;K Partners LLC. Mr. Uyoka, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is Rai Robert Uyoka on behalf of Y&amp;K Partners LLC. I apologize, my client was unable to be here today. Mr. Kadashi Yamamoto, he's a manager. He did appear for the preliminary hearing because unable to be here today. If possible, I'd like to proceed to public hearing, if possible.
You are the authorized representative?
I am authorized, yes.
Very good. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 8th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Uyoka, do you like us to address the space number seven needing to be deleted? Or are you gonna be addressing that on a separate?
It was actually approved, I think, two weeks ago when Mr. Goz and I just wanted to mention that we did get a letter of authorization for allowing the sale and service of liquor and issuance of liquor license to the applicant.
Okay, great. Sure, yeah.
Okay, motion to approve application number 19-14981. Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number 19-14981 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number five of the public hearing, application number 19-15067 from EJai Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Mia Obsiana, on behalf of the applicant seated to my right is he, John Wang, president and director of the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 8th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 19-15067. Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number 19-15067 is approved.
Thank you.
Moving into the license application, agenda item number six, application number 19-15796 from Ford Alahu Dewey. Ms. Naoli.
Hello Commissioners, my name is June Knight Worthy and I'm a representative for Ford Alahu Dewey.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Ms. Naoli, you've participated with this promoter before?
Yes.
And have you had any incidents or any problems?
No, actually, he was really generous. The last one we did not do as well and he still honored what he said he was gonna give us. So we're extremely happy.
That is Mr. Ho, correct?
Yes, correct.
And he is involved in this one, no?
Yes.
Very good.
Just for the record, this is the slightly stupid?
Yes, and rebel soldiers. Rebel soldiers.
Ms. Naoli, have you had experience with any of these events at the Alahu Tower?
Yes, I have, yes. We've done other events with him.
Okay, and I see.
But not on the liquor side, just being part of the event.
I see. And I see you're expecting about 2,000 attendees and I was wondering if you could tell us about the security plan? And on the back page of the layout, it looks like there's reference to highlight security at Honolulu Police?
Right, we have 10 HPD, I mean, Honolulu HPD officers and 32 security personnel. That would be the event.
Thank you.
This is a great layout, thank you. You can see everything very clearly. I think the only thing that's missing that I've seen previously is what, and I may be overlooking it, help me out here, but you guys are serving beer and wine?
Beer.
What are you guys serving?
Beer and then the container. They're all iron container form, so there's no actual pouring of hardener or anything like that.
Just like in a past, everything is canned, yeah?
Right, yes.
Canned and served, so it's only beer and?
And it's kind of, it's a mixed drink, but?
In the canned form.
Canned form, yeah.
Canned. Okay. You guys good?
Good.
Okay, motion to approve application number 19-15796. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number 19-15796 is approved.
We need some help here.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number 19-15218 from Broken Boundary Brewery. Chairman?
Hi, please introduce yourself.
My name is Christopher Cook.
Please spell your name for the commissions reporter.
My name is William Sumrow, Chris and I are co-members and co-founders of Broken Boundary Brewery.
Commissioner?
What is your seating capacity?
It's roughly 100 people.
Do you mind explaining a little bit about what kind of business you do? I notice there's a homebrew section and there's a?
A section. Yep, so the homebrew section of the store, we sell the raw ingredients and equipment for homebrew hobbyists. So includes malted barley and other grains like corn, rye. And then we also sell hops, yeast, and then miscellaneous equipment like fermenters, brewing kettles and brewing equipment burners and the like for the hobbyists. That is a wholly separate entity that is owned by my wife and myself. It is not a part of Broken Boundary Brewery. We're just utilizing the same rental space from our landlord. Because the, when we bought the business back in 2017, we saw the opportunity that the overall warehouse was far larger than what the retail business required and we'd always desired to open a brewery.
Okay, so the only, the proposed segregation of the two businesses currently the 42 inch wall?
Yes, sir.
But for the actual brew pub space that you folks are requesting license for, it's seating for about 100 people, you said?
Possibly, yes.
And I'm assuming you're brewing beer?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No plans at this time. Maybe in the future, but we're both passionate about beer.
Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number 19-15218. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number 19-15218 is approved.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number 19-15581 from Divine Tasting Brewery.
Good afternoon, my name is Kira, K-I-R-A, Kawakami, K-A-W-A-K-A-M-I, on behalf of Divine Tasting Brewery, applicant. This is in Kailua Town Center next to Whole Foods, correct? Yes.
Motion to approve application number 19-15581. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number 19-15581 is approved.
Thank you, good luck, thank you.
Motion. 159.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number 19-15582 from Divine Tasting Brewery.
Kira Kawakami again, last name K-A-W-A-K-A-M-I, on behalf of applicant Divine Tasting Brewery.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Victor, I have. Okay, motion to approve application number 19-15582. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number 19-15582 is approved. Moving on to license applications, temporary license application, agenda item number 10, application number 19-15587 from HSK Investment Corporation.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Saung Cho, S-U-A-N-G, last name C-H-O. I'm a president of the HSK Corporations and applying for the temporary legal license.
Please, please have a seat. Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve temporary application number 19-15587. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 10, application number 19-15587 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number 11, application number 19-15699 from Omokasi LLC.
Good afternoon, afternoon here. Commissioners?
Mr. I, Gabriel Pravenza on behalf of Omokasi LLC. To my right is Thomas Swayman Howard. He's executive chef and principal of that.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Right, motion to approve temporary application number 19-15699. Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 11, application number 19-15699 is approved.
Thank you.
Moving into requests, agenda item number 12, request number 19-15464 from Tiki Ventures Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Richard McCall, spelled R-I-C-H-A-R-D, McCall, M-C-C-A-L-L.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. McCall.
Yes.
The proposed extended area for outdoor use, what type of barricades are you using?
We have portable rolling vegetation barriers and also murals.
Okay, and it covers the whole elk shape?
Yes.
Question, is the rest, were the restrooms part of your original license?
Um, no, we didn't license that area because we don't allow anybody to take alcohol back into the back area.
Oh, that is a fact.
So just, yeah. So it's behind the commissary kitchen. Yeah, we restrict all alcohol to the bar area where it can be monitored.
And then your tenants, in the current drawing, it looks like there was a Sam's Kitchen?
Um, that was originally about a year, two years ago.
They're not there.
They're no longer there.
And you have anybody occupying the front? Just a food kiosk?
Um, they have a, yeah, there's a food kiosk down in front and also a money exchange.
Do they have outdoor seating?
They used to, but I don't believe they have anymore. But our area is barricaded off from theirs.
Right. Chair, good. Okay, motion to approve request number 19-15464. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 12, request number 19-15464 is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number 13, request number 19-15749 from Maimo Gooji. How's that?
Goz?
Maimo Gooji.
Uh, one more time.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Jae Woo Chang, J-A-E-W-O-O-C-H-U-N-G from Maimo Gooji Inc., DVA, Pokibar, Dyson Inc.
Very good, Commissioner.
No boo gogi, huh?
Yes.
What is it, is that a game?
Korean food.
Maimo gogi means feast in Korea.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, motion to approve request number 19-15749. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 13, request number 19-15749 is approved.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number 14, request number 19-15808 from EW Enterprises LLC. Mr. Wary.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Ed Wary, W-A-R-Y. I am the principal owner and manager of the LLC of EW Inc., which is Whiskey Dick's Loom, DVA.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Mr. Wary.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain to us, you're requesting to do a moon tang beverage?
Yes.
Explain to us the preparation from the beginning to the end, how it's stored and how it serves?
The, we have five gallon containers. It's, we use three, 750 milliliters of alcohol, two伏特加s and one of the moonshine. And then it's, we make a batch of, actually of tank, sweetened with our own simple syrup. And that's batched and held overnight and chilled and then that's served. It's served as a batch because it's become so popular that we're not able to do them individually. They back up at the bar because it would be four steps going into each one. So when we start batching them, we can simply pour them off. In the batch, it's the equivalent of a standard tall cocktail. It's only, it's about 12% alcohol by volume. So it's overall, it's a relatively low alcohol cocktail. Extremely popular with our military crowd, which is who we cater to. It actually outsells Jack Daniels, Jack and Coke, which is a surprise for a country western bar.
Roll them up.
Okay, so these containers, they're stored in your?
Walk-in refrigerator, which is right to the side of the bar.
Okay, how are you labeling it or how?
Well, it's labeled with our moon tang. It's labeled and dated on there, but they only last, do them one day. They're sold by the third day. So we do want, we do two a week in order to get through the busy weekend period.
So you only intend on serving it on the weekends?
Well, we're only open four nights a week. So, but 95% of our business is Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So that's what they make them for. During the week, we just do dance lessons and it's very quiet. But Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is 95% of our business. And that's how the batching came along is because they're so busy, they couldn't keep up with it.
So you intend on just doing two, two five gallon containers then?
That's what we're doing at this time and we don't anticipate that changing based on our volume.
How long have you been serving this cocktail?
Well, we were doing it for a few months until we were notified that it wasn't kosher. Which was kind of a surprise because it wasn't our original idea. I mean, we've seen it, batching cocktails around town. Things like Sangria have been batched forever. We know that they put pre-made cocktails on tap at some bars and put them in barrels at some times. So we felt, we didn't realize that pre-batching was not something we should have been doing without discussing it first. So that's what brings me here is that we were, so we should need to talk in front of the commission.
And sir, so if I wanted to have this cocktail made from scratch for me?
Yes.
Would that be an option for me?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if a customer comes in and says, I don't want it from that plastic bottle that's been mixed up a bunch of times, I want a fresh moon tang.
Yes.
All of your server, all of your bartenders are trained to be able to make it?
Yes, they are. That's how it started, you're all very well aware of it.
Is there a specific brand of vodka that you use?
No. No, well, we use our our warehouse, uh, we use the specific old smoky Moonshine, it's one of the bottles, and the other two is our house wild vodka.
It's a house.
Ritual, by the way, Sky Vodka, it's an American, we're an American saloon, so we try to, it's all American made.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sky is good.
Mr. Wary, um, you described the potential for your staff to actually make to order, how long does that take?
Well, it's a four, it's a four-step process with two liquids, the alcohol, and then they 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 top off everyone with sprint, with Sprite. So it would take, it takes three or four minutes per, uh, to do that. And then it's, we do a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five a night on weekends. And that's generally over about a four-hour period, so it's the most popular one. Try to get in line, some of the soldiers will come in and order for their group, about six of them, so I mean, that'll take ten, twelve minutes for someone to make that, and then all of a sudden, the bar backs up considerably.
Okay, and you you do not serve alcohol Sunday, Monday, Tuesday?
That's correct.
Uh, if you have any leftover in a batch on Saturday, what are you gonna do with the product?
Well, it holds, uh, they rarely, they rarely do, they're generally running out on Saturday, but if they, if they have a batch, then they will simply add that to another, to the fresh new batch. It's tang and and so it ages well, in fact, the longer the better is what.
Mr. Wary.
Oh, you're not at all for that?
I don't want.
My issue with that, yeah.
I don't wanna come in and drink that, and it's been sitting since Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Just by the way, I go, I go to your bar, by the way. It's very busy, it's very busy.
Yes, boy, you understand my issue.
I understand your issue, and it's, it's, um.
Well, I, you know, I answer this to assume, I assume what they do, uh, but if there's a issue with that, we can handle it anyway, in July, I'm not even sure what they do. I've never known them to have any leftover, but I I assume that that's what they would do. We're actually hoping at some point to, uh, to talk to someone about packaging this for us, so we wouldn't have to batch it ourselves and handle it correctly, but right now, it's just, you know, we're just shocked at how popular it is.
Mr. Wary, I have two questions for you. How much experience do you have in the restaurant business?
Well, uh, Commissioner, I've been doing this for about fifty years in this town right here.
Fifty years, right here, very good.
I go back to the old Auntie Pus' days, back in the eight eighties and before that.
And so if I go in and order one of these batch drinks, and all of the Commissioners each order a batch drink, we will all get the same amount of alcohol?
Yes, sir, which by the way, is one of the reasons why I approved for the operating partners and managers, why I was in favor of this, because one thing it does is not only speeds it up and allows us to concentrate on presentation, but it gives a consistency to everybody, I don't have to worry about as bartender. Doing different, different, four different steps, and it's inconsistent with repairs, especially when they're, when they're busy and they had tendency to pour. So if we're batching it up, I know all of you are gonna get exactly the same drink.
Well, we wouldn't take you up on the offer. I just use that as an example. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Let me ask one more question, Mr. Wary, how are you sanitizing the containers?
Well, they they do them individually at the bar, we don't, uh, sometimes they'll take containers down to Whiskey Dick's, downstairs at Dick's and run them through the dishwasher. But we have the, we have the three vault, uh, three sink system, where we use sanitizer, hot water, and they're rinsed and washed two times. They're aired out and 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 held in the walk-in until they're dry, and then they're filled, and then they're rinsed again before the product goes in. So I, what I know of it is a four-step process there as well, and they they rinse, they wash, they rinse, they store it, and then they rinse before they put the product in. We use sanitizers in the dip, in the, in the three sink process.
Uh, motion to convene into executive session, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we're in our own executive session. Okay, we are, um, back on the record, Commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant or type of action?
Yes, Chair, uh, motion to approve, uh, agenda item number fourteen, request number nine, one nine dash one five eight zero eight with the following conditions, uh, number one, Mr. Wary, you have to, uh, label these containers and on the label, you must include a mix date and a discard date.
Understand.
The second condition is, um, the mix must be served or discarded within twenty-four hours.
That, the the made batch, I understand, in fact, uh, we, I'll apologize, but I tried to contact my operating partner and asked him about that, and he said that they do discard it, but that'll, very definitely, I give you my word, that'll be taken care of.
So you're allowed to do it with those two conditions?
I second the motion on the floor.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one five eight zero eight is, uh, approved with the conditions in Vice Chair Gonabon's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck, Mr. Wary.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, Hawaii Youth Golf Association, DBA, the first team of Hawaii. Call, so we help them out, and they do not comply with the conditions that we put on the license. Commissioners, keep that under consideration the next time they come before you.
That's Chair noted.
Let me officially wait for Mr. Sato. No response, thank you, calling agenda, uh, I take that back, uh, Commissioners, can I have a type of action on agenda items number sixteen through twenty-two inclusive?
Yes, Chair, motion for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision and order for agenda items sixteen through twenty-two inclusive, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen through twenty-two are approved.
And Chair, um, a motion, a motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items twenty-three through thirty-two inclusive, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda items number twenty-three through thirty-two inclusive are approved.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt Chair, so with respecting number fifteen, are we just abandoning hope on them or attempting to bring them back?
Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
It it seems like they're disregarding our notices to appear, so I don't think that we should make more effort to have them appear, but we should note that, um, they did not comply with the conditions set on the special license.
Uh, an option could be, uh, without too much discussion, because it would result in a violation, is I think they could be subject to a failure to comply with commission order. Just saying.
Yes, do you, do we need a motion to issue that?
Um, why, I guess it can be referred to enforcement for investigation, and then we'll just take action, okay, without.
Agenda, okay.
Okay, do you need a motion for that?
No, I do not.
No, okay, so we will refer, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not happy with that, because if I remember correctly, for the record, uh, there were some discrepancies and some discussion on the applicant's qualifications.
Yes, Chair.
For applying as a nonprofit.
Yes, Chair.
I'm not pleased with that, and, um, moving on to adjudications. Let's call, um, okay, calling, um, agenda item number thirty-three for Saigon.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. I, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, here on behalf of the prosecution for tonight's agenda, uh, adjudication items. Um, in regards to the number thirty-three, licensee has signed a waiver of appearance and written stipulation, plead no contest.
Motion to accept the waiver of appearance and written plea of no contest, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the, um, no contest plea is accepted.
So this was.
And the waiver of appearance.
Um, this was a charge for improper time records, the first violation, and, uh, the recommended fine was two hundred fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Million Restaurant.
Hi, I'm Caroline Kim, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of my mother, Kyung Suk Park.
Can you please spell your names for the record?
My name is Caroline Kim, C A R O L I N E K I M, my mom's name is Kyung Suk Park, K Y U N G S O O K P A R K.
Thank you.
Okay, the charges on or about, uh, April seventeen, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employees Kyung Suk Park and Diana Park uh, reported on duty and again when the employees went off duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and state of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead, uh, no contest? Motion to accept the plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Ms. Kim, Park, would you like to make any comment? You folks have fixed the time records and know what you do, know what to do now?
Yeah, 'cause we're here every day, and sometimes I forget, or she forgets to write it, yeah, 'cause we're there every day, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she gets mad at me when I forget.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number thirty-five, Club Waterfall.
My name is William Chong Junior, W I L L I A M, C H O N G J R. I'm the president, uh, for Corporation Meong Nam Inc., DBA Club Waterfall.
Thank you.
Okay, the charges on or about April nineteenth, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, uh, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employee Wonu Freda Allen reported on duty and again when the employee went off duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Chong, how would you like to plead?
I'd be guilty.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-five, the guilty plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
For adjudication purposes, this is a first violation, so I recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Chong, would you like to make any comment?
It's really, it's not funny, but I've been in the business forty-five years, I just passed seventy. And all these waitresses that follow us around, they're, they're all in their mid-sixties already, I think she's just, just getting a little bit old and forgetting to.
Thank you, thank you.
That's the only thing I gotta say, you know, so I gotta always call the managers and say, check all you people, make sure they close the car. That's all I can say.
All right, thank you, um, motion, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-five, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
You get one senior moment in the morning, one senior moment in the afternoon, and the third senior moment, you have to go to bed.
I think it's getting to the point where we all.
Please, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-six, Club Spotlight.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keith Keuchy, attorney for the licensee.
Chair, the good conflict filed with Q's for this matter. Thank you, Commissioner, I'm sure, so noted for the record.
Okay, uh, the first charge is on or about March.
A waiving of both charges and a plea of no contest on both charges.
Okay, uh, motion to accept the pleas for, uh, charges one and two, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-six, charge number one and charge number two, the no contest pleas are accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation for charge one?
Uh, charge one is the second violation, um, the last one was in twenty sixteen, so I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
And as to charge two?
Uh, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Keuchy.
Yeah, my client, uh, because of the illness of her husband, this occurred when her husband was still alive. She's had a series of manager run the bar, and she tries to impress on the managers how they got to comply with the rules. And unfortunately, the manager didn't on this instance, uh. Uh, she talked to the manager after she received the violations.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one and two hundred fifty dollars for charge two, for a total of seven hundred fifty dollars, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-six, uh, charge number one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Agenda item number thirty-six, charge number two, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved, for a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-seven, the district parlor karaoke.
Um, licensee has contacted me, contacted me, um, and, uh, they've requested a continuance till January seventeenth, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-seven to January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-seven, let's continue to January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, Ohana Karaoke Two and Balla Two.
Uh, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Al Minya Mu, Pira Pobi Inaka Kink, um, yeah, both the no contest for the charges. Motion, motion to accept the plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Neely, this is, uh, the violation is for having unauthorized gaming machines on the premises. Uh, these were for two Super Touch machines, is that correct?
Yes.
So what's going on with this licensee?
Um, the licensee had a notice from vendor who supplied the game machine, that he sent the request for use of karaoke and gaming device. Um, and about after two, three months later, um, and licensee trusted the word and accepted when the machine, uh, was delivered to the premises, and after the citation was issued, licensee found out from the vendor that the gaming machine was not approved. Um, licensee removed the gaming machines immediately from the licensed premises after.
And I'm disappointed that this licensee is not here, um, because, so now you will need to impress upon your client that vendors are not, they're, they're, your clients are strictly responsible for complying with the law. They should not be relying on any vendors to tell them what is correct and what is not. So we don't like this happening where they're blaming it on a vendor, the vendor is not a licensee. Your clients are licensees, and they are responsible for what happens inside of their premises, and they are responsible for complying with the rules and the laws of the liquor commission. Um, so seeing that, um, I'm sorry, Chair, you have something?
Yes, I just have one question, where were the machines located?
I actually don't know, I didn't ask the question to the licensee, all I know is. All I know is, according the uh,
Bless you.
Inside over there licensed the premises.
Very good, can we hear from, uh, do we have somebody uh, from enforcement?
We, I don't have any information at this time where the machines were.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Like, Ms. Wu, I, I share, um, place chairman's, um, comments, I, I'm disappointed that your client's not here. Uh, is there any reason why he or she could not attend this proceeding today?
Um, I do have a, um, like a text message conversation with her about twelve-thirty, um, she was planning to come. Let me actually just read it to you, make things.
You don't have to read it to me, um, I just wanna impress upon you and other licensees that we take these offenses very seriously. Not having the ability to talk directly to the licensee poses a problem to the commission, in my opinion. I just wanna show that, and you, you don't, you don't have to read it, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, um, uh, that being said, um, because there were two of these machines on the premises at the time, um, my motion is is, is to issue a thousand dollar fine for each machine, for a total of two thousand dollars, second.
They're moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty-eight, a penalty of a thousand dollars per machine will be issued for a total of two machines equals two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Moving on to agenda item number thirty-nine, University Stop.
My name is Kei Chan, K Y U, and C H A N G, I'm the manager of University Stop.
The charges on or about April twenty-four, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee offered, furnished, delivered, or gave away free goods, perpetuities, gifts, prizes, coupons, premiums, or other article or thing of value to wit one two-hundred milliliter bottle of Spedka vodka to a consumer or customer in connection with the sale of liquor, in violation of rule three eighty-four eighty-five point one of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
How's it?
How would you like to plead? You can accept, deny, or plead no contest.
No contest, but uh, you.
Hold on one moment, one moment, uh, motion to accept the plea, second.
They're moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
This is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Sir, now, go ahead.
If I allow me, uh, I have question, because I, at that night, uh, got investigator came in with the, uh, the customer, who was under twenty-one. But I checked my ID, that's why they found out he's, he's using a fake ID. But when he checked the items, uh, he got the, uh, one, that two-hundred milliliter vodka, which I charged only ten cent. Because since he bought a lot of, uh, alcoholic beverage, you know, I know it's, it's illegal if I give to them, uh, free things, but that's why I charged ten cent, but uh, uh, I was still confused, is the ten cents allowed to charge, or because it's too low charge? Ten cent, about two-hundred bottle, uh, two-hundred milliliter vodka. Technically, it's not the giveaway, I think, I think it was free.
What was the total amount of, um, items that he purchased from you that day?
Total amount of seventy-two thousand dollars.
Seventy-two dollars?
Yes.
It's actually seventy-five dollars, three ones.
Oh, so, yeah, I can't remember, yeah, it's so, blah, 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 wrong there.
What else did he purchase, Mr. Chan?
Excuse me?
What else did he purchase from your store?
He just, well, I cannot remember how many bottles, but three or four bottles of alcoholic beverage, and I think that was it, I think.
Is that part of your normal program? So if I come to your store in the mid-eighties?
No, no, not normal program, because, actually, that, that item was behind the counter, because a lot of dealers, alcoholic wholesalers, they give us a, a free sample, beers, and new beers, should have tasted, you know, that's why it was behind the counter, actually, enough for the sale. And, you know, since he purchased about seventy-five dollars worth of alcoholic beverage, is a lot of money to me, because we working for diamonds and dollars. That's why, you know, I just, I know it was illegal for the free to give away, that's why I actually, I charged ten cent, but the investigator, first time he asked me that, you know, the customer told, or told him, uh, he got the free, but I, I charged ten, ten cent, that's why he just grabbed the bottle, he checked all my, uh, uh, shelves, uh, the alcoholic beverage shelves, he told me, no, because others, I cannot see the same items. Of course, he's the only sample, I don't have, for sale, uh, items, same items on the shelf. And here, then, that's why I told him, explain, and he told me, no, you didn't have a price tag. You know, of course, he's got the price tag on, because it's just, just leave there behind the counter, and just grab, give them ten cent. That's what I did, you know, I don't, no, that's why my question.
Okay, we, we understand what you're saying.
Uh-huh.
Okay, would you like to change your plea? You pleaded no contest, you're not contested, and we understand, we understand the situation, but you violated our rules.
Yeah, I don't, oh, I'm not gonna change, but. Because I'm just asking, is that, is totally illegal if I check, uh, uh, charge ten cent to one bottle?
Mr. Chan, do you sell the vodka? You don't have this on the floor at all?
Of course, yes. I don't mean.
Do you have, sell this product on your floor?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
So how do you distinguish from what's on the counter and what's behind the counter?
Like I told you, some, uh, the wholesalers, they just.
Was it open? Was it open?
It's not open, no.
And it's the intent for you to sample it?
Yes.
For you to sample?
Just, just taste it, you know?
Okay, but you didn't taste it?
And sometimes if they have a lot of, small bottles, because they're selling, so if they have about hundred, hundred cases, they say, oh, I, I can give you fifty cent per, you know, bottle, or if you buy a hundred cases, that's what they, the bottle, because.
Is this the only bottle you have?
That's the only bottle I have.
You had any other bottles in behind your counter?
At the small, no, at that time, no, because one, or two bottles in the refrigerator, was sample.
Ms. Neely, do you have the receipt tape? Was there a ten cent item?
I do. Uh, there is, um, it's listed next to recycle.
Recycle.
A bottle fee.
I guess, I, I mean, it says, well, there's two, uh, items listed as recycle, one is seven cents, and the second is ten cents.
The ten cent, because, you know, like, you know, our store is small store, you, you don't have a computerized, uh, calculator, I mean, uh, registration, so you just push the button, you know, for ten cent. That's why I just pushed the button, you know, recycle button.
When do you press the recycle button? In what other instance would you press the recycle button?
I'm sorry, to.
To reset, yeah.
To clarify, there's two other recycle items, one is seventy-eight cents and one is nineteen cents.
So what are those charges?
Recycle, actually recycle, and, you know, sometimes right now, we, we push the fifty cent for the, uh, bag, plastic bag, if they purchase, yes.
But recycle is five cents, yeah?
No, six point five cent, actually.
Six point five cents per, per bottle?
For one, one bottle.
One bottle, and how much bottles did they purchase?
I don't know, uh, uh, they won't have a, how much, the first one?
How much did they purchase? They purchased, uh, two, uh, seven-hundred milliliter new Amsterdam Apple vodkas, one.
That's no, that's no recycle charge for the.
Red glass, right, Ellen is, recycle.
When you recycle for wine, yeah, or, you know, social, that's top, yeah, or beer, of course.
Mr. Chan, you, you actually sell the two-hundred milliliter bottle of this Spedka vodka?
To that customer?
You sell the small bottle to your customers? Generally?
Uh, yeah, actually, you know, it's feel like a free, but I, it's, I understand that's illegal, that's why I charged ten cent.
No, no, but do you sell to other customers? If I came into your store, could I say I want one, two-hundred milliliter bottle of Spedka vodka, that's all?
Yeah, because we're selling.
Will you sell it to me?
Send it to you? Of course I will send it to you.
Or anyone?
He said for sale.
Is it for sale?
As if offer for sale.
How much would you sell the nip for?
Or that, that bottle?
Yeah, that's, it's called a nip.
That's really hard to sell, because I don't know the cost, that one, you know, because.
You don't sell it? You generally don't sell that?
That, that item, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I just understood, yeah.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the executive session, second.
Moved in second, is all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, we are now in the executive session. Okay, we are, um, now back on official record, listeners.
Yes, Chair, uh, before I make my motion, sir, I just want to remind you that you're responsible for knowing and understanding all the laws and the rules having a liquor license in the city and county of Honolulu. If you have additional questions about what types of activities are in compliance and what aren't, that's why the entire liquor commission staff is here for you, Monday through Friday, seven-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, and you can call, you can come in, you can email to have your questions answered if you're not sure, okay? This commission is not responsible for answering those questions at the hearing, okay? Um, you, you may, but no questions, please.
No question, I know, but, uh, that's why, uh, the, uh, our store, almost every other, uh, every week, about twice a week, the investigator always staying outside our store.
Okay, but the investigators are there to see if you are in compliance or not, and to issue violations if they see non-compliance. They're not there to answer questions about compliance, so if you don't know, if you are, if you thinking of doing something, and you don't know if that's correct, because it's not in the, or you don't understand, you need to come into this office, not them come to you, not come into over here, the office in the front, to help you, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, my motion is to, uh, approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty-nine, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number, uh, forty, Shabu Shabu Hau. Shabu Shabu Hau, thank you.
I'm sorry, could you, a little bit, did you get that?
Volume, please.
Okay.
Speak up and spell your name for the reporter.
Uh, it's got K A C U Y O, Makita, M A K I T A, thank you.
Okay, the charges on or about July eleventh, twenty seventeen, and or during the period between June twenty-six, twenty seventeen, and January twenty-second, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee without commission approval transferred to another person the licensee's business for which the licensee's license was issued, either openly or under any undisclosed arrangement whereby such other person came into possession or control of the business, or took in any partner or associate, associate in violation of section two eighty-one, forty-one H of the Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead? Sorry, how would you like to plead? You can accept, deny, or plead no contest. Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number forty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Would you like to make any comment? Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number forty, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty-one, Fort Ruger Market.
Um, licensee contacted me about this case and requested a continuance to January seventeenth, I have no objection.
Thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item forty-one, Fort Ruger Market to January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, second.
They're moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number forty-one is continued to January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number forty-two, Ola Mana Golf Links.
My name is Song Lee, I'm the general manager of Ola Mana Golf, of course.
Um, so, I believe the, uh, he admitted previously, you previously admitted to this charge, so we're just here for the penalty phase.
Yes.
Um, so, the recommendation remains the same, this is the first violation, recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
And I see we have a copy of the, of the sales report. Ms. Riass? Yes, thank you for coming. And has this, is this an acceptable report?
Um, we, uh, the figures that's shown, uh, estimated based on the three year average of, um, the past vehicles filed, we found that was the most secure to wait to, to figure their sales and the cost of the cost. And, uh, as soon as we finished, he came, we explained in person how we estimated. He agreed and signed on this and consent, there was no additional fee due for the year, okay?
Do you have any, um, concerns about the reporting going forward?
Um, only thing is that, that the general manager doesn't know anything about the reporting requirements, so, we feel that we need to do our orientation to make sure to understand the rules for continuing those things.
Mr. Li, you're the general manager?
Yes.
Um, would you agree with what she just said in terms of orientation?
Okay.
You're willing to do that? You're what? Are you willing to do the orientation to learn the pro, process procedures?
Yes.
Good, because we wanna make sure you're in compliance going forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um, I know that you testified as to this, um, in the previous hearing, um, but are you, you're the new manager, correct?
Yes.
And these violations occurred under former management?
Yes.
And you're gonna be managing these matters going forward, correct?
Yes.
Um, hearing that, uh, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, however, we will approve, we will suspend collection of that one thousand dollars for a period of one year, um, provided that no similar violation occurs within that one year period. If a similar violation does occur, that one thousand dollars will be collectible in addition to any other fees levied by the commission.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, agenda item number forty-two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. However, that amount will be suspended for a period of one year, provided a similar violation does not happen within the one year period. And, thank you, you are not, you are not officially open yet?
Uh, we still waiting for the healthy inspection.
Health inspection on, on the kitchen side?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Very good. As soon as we pass the inspection, we'll open the.
Yeah, so you are not selling alcohol at all?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number.
Happy New Year, Brian.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year to you. Calling agenda item number forty-three, Paisley Meadery. Mr. Koata.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Mark Koata, I represent Brian Paisley, he's to my right.
Can, can you read the charge, please?
Okay. The charges on or about April third, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, Paisley Meadery Incorporated did sell liquor to include one hundred ninety proof grain alcohol without having a valid twenty-eighteen license to sell such liquor, in violation of section two eighty-one three of the Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Okay, and how would you like to plead?
Uh, denied and not guilty, it's ready to have a hearing.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
They're moved and, to approve the.
Not for denial.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, can we move directly into the.
Um, so, uh, it's been moved in second, all over favor.
Hi.
I vote I, uh, the denial is approved. Denial of the charge is approved. Ms. Neely, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I'm ready, um, I do have exhibits, like, like, moved into evidence, do you have any?
Before we start, um, is there any witnesses in the hearing room now that are, um, intend, either you intend to call, to testify?
I have two witnesses I intend, I intend to call, they are not in the hearing room.
I intend to call Mr. Paisley, now, um, Mr. Commissioner Mia Shirou, that, I, I wasn't sure who the accused is, so if it's the company, then Mr. Paisley, at your discretion, probably should step outside.
Well, the, the entity is Paisley Meadery Inc., which is the accused, um, but to the extent that Mr. Paisley is representative, he can attend, but if there's any other witness who intends to testify, they need to leave.
No, so that witness execution is not necessary.
Thank you for the representation, and Ms. Neely, you were saying something about. Thank you for the representation, and Ms. Neely, you were saying something about.
Oh, yes. Um, I have exhibits one through four that I've already presented to Mr. Koata, um, that I'd like to move into evidence.
Real fast, I don't have any exhibit. Objections to exhibit one, no objection to exhibit two, no exhibit, no objection to exhibit three. I do have a question about exhibit four, would I, would it be okay if I objected to the deputy corporation counsel?
As part of cross-examination, or, or to the, I'm sorry, to Ms. Neely?
I'll object to the, to exhibit four at this time, if we're not going to get into. And I have some, what could be wadiar questions, if that's.
Okay, we're, um, we're not inclined to entertain wadiar questions with Mr. Koata, but, um, we will, um, accept exhibits one through four, subject to your objection and your ability to cross-examine witnesses with the concerned parties.
Thank you, and I'm aware that this is not, you know, the rules of evidence, aren't all enforced in effect, but I, I just, I, you know, I.
I would hope so, okay.
It's all by your rules, so forget.
We're, we're volunteers, Mr. Koata.
Yes, I'm not.
We're definitely aware of that also.
So four copies is all you're providing?
Oh, it's. Bye.
I'll need to be came one tomorrow.
Exhibit four?
In section, we've actually officially accepted all of that.
Yes, we've admitted exhibits one through four to evidence, subject to Mr. Koata's objections. Any other preliminary matters before you, do you want to make an opening statement?
Um, just briefly, that section, HRS section two eighty-one three, um, explicitly prohibits a person from manufacturing or selling alcohol without a license. Um, and we have evidence today that will show that, uh, Mr. Paisley didn't sell liquor, um, to liquor commission investigator Scott Perez and Leroy Conti without a license.
Mr. Koata, do you wish to provide an opening statement?
Very briefly, I'll be, and I promise to be brief, if I start talking too much, Commissioner Miyashiro, please let me go.
I will let you say what you need to say.
Okay, um, you know, under ordinary circumstances, members of the commission, Mr. Paisley may not, you know, he may be sitting here entering a plea of guilty, right? With an explanation or no contest, the problem with this one is that, uh, you know, this, this company is not in, doesn't have the license yet. And I know the commission members are very, you're looking at this one hard. And so we're here, I'm not telling you that he's guilty, we're here because Mr. Paisley does want to provide you with an explanation about how this came about. I think there may be some misunderstandings here. But among other things, at the time of the incident, you see, the original application of this was filed back in last November, and they didn't get a hearing until November of two thousand eighteen. But in anticipation of opening, right, Mr. Paisley had a lease, right, or the company had a lease, and they actually outfitted the premises, you look at some of the photographs, the photographs look like, and it's pretty much built out of it. What you don't see is that there are no menus, right? There's no signs, there's no alcohol out in front, right? And nobody was advertising that this place was open for anything other than, right? And, and this is what was shown on Yelp. What's shown on Yelp is that this place was open for special events, catering, and there were tours of what, you know, this place is, it's a meadery. And I didn't know what that was until I met Mr. Paisley, it's basically a honey wine. Mr. Paisley was previously licensed back in two thousand eleven. He was in business for three years until his wife basically took it over. The wife eventually shut it down. He, Brian Paisley, is the wine master, he's also the brewmaster. Mr. Paisley had no violations in the previous entity. On this one, he's here to tell you that he wasn't selling the liquor. Right now, what you do see here, there's a few bottles of what had been previously manufactured, and he's had this for years. And what he does is on occasion, he'll give this stuff away. And if you look at some of the reports, and again, this is why I wanted to cross-examine some of these people, I don't intend to keep you folks here all night, but you'll see the report, the report says, Mr. Paisley said, I'll give you a sample, this is what the report says, on page two or four, Paisley stated, he will give me a sample of the hundred ninety proof alcohol to taste, which he had just completed. And he proceeded to do just that, after he took the investigators back, the investigator walked in, Mr. Paisley said, are you doing what you're, what you're here for, this is what you're doing here? He says, you know, we're going to manufacture this online. He took them in the back, showed them everything, right? And he said, I'll give you a sample, I will give you a sample, there's nothing on premises, and I think the investigator has testified to this, that says that anything's for sale, you know, prices on the wall, there are no menus, there's no signs on the tables, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. He proceeded to give taste of two of the, two items that he had. These things, as the investigator tell you, did not even have labels on them, because this was all for his own personal consumption. No demand or request for payment was made, it's, it's all over the reports. He proceeded to give it to them, and then somebody pulled out fifteen dollars, said, here, take it, it's a tip. Before this guy was able to give it back, they said, the liquor commission, you're citing. Now, I, I don't, I would like to have the update with a short cross-examination of the witnesses, but that's essentially how I read the reports, and that's essentially what Mr. Paisley is going to say. There, you know, the color photos are indicative of what this place looks like. You know, it's a, it's not quite an open restaurant yet, there are no menus out there, there are no signs, you know, there's nothing to indicate what gets served, because what he does, and you'll see it on the Yelp website, he does special events, and then on occasion, what they'll do is they'll bring in special menus, and they'll post it on social media and say, come on down. But they don't advertise that this alcohol, here's a, here's a bottle. No label on it. I think one of the investigators will testify that Mr. Paisley said, try it. Right, and there was no indication that they would have to even pay for this. And they weren't given a sales receipt or anything of that nature. Now, the, the interesting thing is, there's gonna be a dispute about whether the equipment was in operation. Mr. Paisley will testify, this equipment was not in operation, but that's the fine. One of the reports says that it is, and I think that's the essence of the case. So Mr. Paisley is going to explain to you, if you look at the photograph, that some of the key equipment is not hooked up, this, this little valve here, it's not hooked up, the equipment won't work without it, you can't manufacture anything. The other two pieces of the equipment are basically not in operation, they don't have any water or liquid in them. And the, the only reason that this stuff was all set up is because they had hoped they were gonna get a hearing back in April or May of two thousand eighteen. You know, by chance, they haven't been able to get it until now, we're not blaming the commission, it's just, you know, he's trying to explain what happened. The last, the last thing is, is one, one electrical item was hooked up, and basically, his testimony is, it wasn't hooked up to any of the things that set this up to make alcohol. And it was used for hot water, coffee. So, I mean, that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and by the way, one last thing, and since the date of the incident, right? They stopped giving samples, and they anticipated that somebody would be coming back, because they were, it was told by investigators that this was part of the licensing investigation, that's also, or he stopped entirely. And so Mr. Paisley is here to tell you that he's, he's into complying with the laws, he has done this in the past, and he doesn't intend to violate the law in the future.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Neely, yeah, you have witnesses to call?
Yes, um, can I call my person, witness, Mr. Perez?
Do you swear that the testimony you gave to the agency will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Liquor Control Investigator, Scott Perez.
Okay, and how long have you been employed as a liquor control investigator?
Approximately five years.
Were you assigned to investigate Paisley Meadery at thirty-six North King Street?
Yes.
Uh, when did you conduct your investigation?
On April third of this year, um, of twenty eighteen, sorry.
Did you work with any other investigators?
Yes, I was assigned to work with liquor control investigator Leroy Conti.
And what were you assigned to investigate?
Earlier, I was given, I was given an assignment. Licensing had received an application from the applicant, and through their investigation and through me confirming, it was found that the license, or the applicant was potentially already operating their establishment, selling for on-premise consumption and for, for retail.
Uh, did licensing inform you what their, uh, basis for thinking that, uh, Paisley was manufacturing and selling ones?
Objection, here's the, I'll allow the response.
So, through licensing, licensing's investigation, and through me verifying as well, on their, on Paisley Meadery's website, it showed for sale, um, alcohol, alcoholic products. Also, through, um, review of Yelp, it showed customers patronizing the establishment in which they were able to purchase alcohol as well.
Uh, please tell us what happened upon your visit to the premises.
So, on April third, investigator Conti and I arrived at Paisley's Meadery. Um, so we, and once we arrived, we were met by Brian Paisley, he was the only person at the establishment at the time. He escorted us and sat us.
Objection, this is often narrative, that's, I'm, I'm allowed, go ahead.
He sat us at a table and took our order. At which me, investigator Conti and I ordered, um, I ordered a mead, and investigator Conti ordered a shot of liquor, which was offered by Mr. Paisley. There is no menu, so everything was verbal between Mr. Paisley to me and myself and investigator Conti.
Okay, and, um, what happened after you ordered a drink?
So after I ordered the drink, um, Mr. Paisley arrived at the table with a bottle of mead, and he poured the mead into a glass for myself, at which point I asked if it was alright that I take a photo. So, took a photo of Mr. Paisley pouring my glass of mead. He then went to the back and came back with a shot of liquor for investigator Conti.
Um, okay, so after he poured, did you, what did you observe upon about the drink he poured?
So it came straight from one of their bottles. I noticed it to be similar to that of bottles that was being filled. Where I was seated, off to my left, so further into the establishment, uh, there is vats. And later on, Mr. Paisley explained to us the process in which their mead is produced and manufactured. So, the bottle was kind of plugged into a machine that the, the liquor or the mead goes into, so that looked the same as the one that Mr. Paisley is pouring from.
Okay, uh, what did the drink smell like?
It smelled like an alcoholic beverage.
Did you taste the drink?
No, I did not.
Okay, um, did Mr. Paisley show you any other part of the premises?
So, since myself and investigator Conti were the only persons within the establishment, Mr. Paisley ended up pulling up a chair next to us and started conversation with us. In this conversation, he later went into details about how the product that we had ordered was manufactured on premises. And later asked if we wanted a tour of the establishment and the, the equipment that he had in there. So he showed us the distiller, excuse me, the stills and the vats in which the product was being made, and he showed us the still that, the shot that investigator Conti's drink came from.
Okay, um, and did you ask Mr. Paisley how much your drink was, maybe it was mead?
Yes, so my beverage, the mead, cost ten dollars, and investigator Conti's drink cost five dollars, with a total of fifteen dollars. So, after that, I paid the fifteen dollars that was given to me as buy money for this purpose, to purchase alcohol, and after my, the currency went from myself to Mr. Paisley, that's, at that point, I made myself identified as a liquor control investigator.
Did Mr. Paisley accept payment?
Yes, Mr. Paisley accepted payment prior to me identifying who I was.
What kind of bill did you pay with?
A ten and a five.
Did Mr. Paisley give you change?
No.
Um, did you write a report about this incident?
Yes, I did.
Okay, uh, this is marked as exhibit one, can you tell me what this is?
This is my investigative report for the incident question.
Okay, um, is this investigative report kept in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes.
Okay, if you turn to... If you turn to the bottom of page two of your report, um, can you read what that says in the second class paragraph?
So the paragraph, I asked how much drinks cost, Paisley replied fifteen dollars. I gave Paisley fifteen dollars USD, which completed the sales transaction, no sales receipt was received.
Okay, and then if you turn to the last page of exhibit one, can you describe what this is?
So notice of violation number two five 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 two, which is that issued to the licensee for the violation of sell, illegal, manufacture, import, or sell of liquor.
And is this citation something you do in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes.
This is a citation you wrote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you do with this citation?
I gave the, the violator's copy to Mr. Paisley, and the original copy was attached to this report.
Okay, and can we take a look at exhibit four? So these are the photos, um, so it's marked as exhibit C, this is, um, part of the, or can you describe what this is?
Hold on, exhibit four is the, I'm not required.
Oh, exhibit three, I'm sorry, so this is exhibit three.
So this is exhibit three, the photos.
The attachments to the, or actually, let me do it. Can you describe what exhibit C is?
Exhibit C is a photo taken from the seat in which we, investigator Conti and myself were seated. Um, in the photo, you see the vats where the mead was being made. And there's a barrel that was also filled with liquor that was being fermented, if memory serves. Um, yeah.
And who took this?
What you just described is that depicted in exhibit C, which is part of exhibit three?
This one.
What are you pointing to?
So, these are the vats that the alcohol, the mead is in.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And then there's a barrel over here as well.
And you s, I thought I heard you say that one of the vats or barrels contained the mead. Is that shown in this picture, exhibit three and C?
So, from what Mr. Paisley had explained to us, that's where the, um, mead was coming from, is these vats.
All of the vats showed on exhibit C?
Yeah.
Okay.
At one different points and processes of the way the mead is made.
Uh, Ms. Neely, you can proceed.
Um, who took this photo?
I did.
And when, at what point did you take it?
I took it prior to the drinks being made, and prior to myself identifying myself as a liquor controller.
Okay, uh, if we turn to the next page, can you describe what this depicts?
This is a picture of Mr. Paisley pouring the glass of mead that I ordered.
And you took this picture as well?
Yes, I took this photo.
Okay, and if we turn to the next page, can you describe what this shows?
So, the two glasses of, is a mead, and then the shot glasses, um, distilled liquor. That liquor was poured from one of the stills that was in the back portion of the establishment.
Um, so the champagne glasses, mead, you know what, what's in the other?
It's a distilled liquor, so it's a hard liquor.
Okay, and you took this photo as well?
Yes.
Um, and then can you describe what's on the next page, exhibit F?
So there's three different stills that was in the back portion of the establishment. So during the portion of the, um, when Mr. Paisley gave investigator Conti and myself a tour of the establishment, he explained that the still on the very far left, that's where the liquor from the shot was poured. So, during this time of the, of me being there, there is actually product being produced and manufactured.
Okay, and you took this photo as well?
Yes. Yes.
Um did you obtain a sample of any of the alcohol?
Yes, so I took a sample from my glass that was poured for me. From the time that Mister Paisley handed the poured the glass and gave it to me, I maintained possession and control of that glass until I poured a sample, which I maintained possession and control of the sample evidence file until I secured it and ex- entered it into evidence to be used since the analysis by HPD.
Do you know the results of this analysis?
Yes, I do, the analysis from the SIS from HPD shows that the sample contained ethyl alcohol greater than half percent.
Objection, next foundation, here's a.
Okay, how do you, how do you?
Just for the record, that's all we're.
And how do, how do you know these results?
I went to SIS to pick up the evidence and I reviewed the documents prior to sending them aside, uh securing them into our evidence lockers.
So if we look at exhibit four, can you tell me what this is?
This is a official report from HPD's scientific investigative section, which shows the outcome and results for the sample that was sent in for analysis.
And this is the document you retrieved?
Yes.
From HPD?
Yes.
Okay, um so during your visit to the premises, did you have any other indications that alcohol was being sold or was for sale?
Just from what we saw on the internet about on Yelp, things that we saw through license or applicants' uh website and what Mister Paisley told to me, myself and investigator Conti, these beverages were for sale and what we had ordered.
Can you go into any more detail about what you saw on either the business website or the Yelp website?
There is indication from those websites that was given to myself from the licensing section through their investigation that this um applicant had started on selling for retail their products prior to having a liquor license. This was also verified, I did go through SCIS, the Liquor Commission Information System. There was, there is no liquor license assigned to that address with this licensee and their DBA.
Um did all that you testified to occur in the city county of Pinellas state of way?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this time.
Thank you, Mister Claude.
Thank you, okay investigator uh Perez, let's see, were you ever employed by HPD?
No.
Have you applied yet?
I've applied before.
And were you accepted?
No.
And why weren't you accepted?
I have no idea.
Was there some, was there a psychological study done?
There probably was, sir, I do not have any idea why I was not accepted there, I do work for the Liquor Commission, I do not know.
I don't like this time of questioning.
Okay, I'm done with that, thank you, Miss Commissioner, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, now you've indicated that you got information from the licensing section, right?
Yes.
And you you put that into your report, it says indications that the applicant is manufacturing, right?
Yes.
This was provided to you by the licensing section.
Yes.
And you reviewed the Yelp, uh has has the Yelp uh posting changed since the time you reviewed it back in April of two thousand and eighteen?
I only reviewed it at the time the re- report was given to me and prior to my going to the establishment.
Okay, so you can't tell whether any changes were made?
No, sir.
Right, and is there anything in particular that you recall on the website that says alcohol is for sale?
I remember seeing pricing.
Okay, and what products were for sale, I mean is there any posting at all that indicates what products are for sale on the Yelp listing?
I seen bottles similar to that that Mister Paisley was pouring the mead from.
Okay, bottles similar to what's shown in exhibit exhibit D.
Yes.
So the green bottle with no label on it.
There was a label, it was towards him.
Okay, now you were on the premises for how long?
Approximately thirty minutes.
Okay, you arrived there at three fifty-five, so about five minutes to four.
Yes.
And is that when this exchange with Mister Paisley took place with regard to the uh pouring of alcohol?
Yeah, shortly thereafter, we entered and sat.
So say five minutes after you entered?
Approximately.
And you sat down at this table that's depicted in which one, exhibit number E?
Yes.
Okay, and Mister Paisley talked to you, now you say that you ordered, now did Mister Paisley say I'll take your order?
Yes.
And that's exactly the words you used, I'll take your order.
Similar to that, I do not ignore, I do not remember the exact beverage.
And so you don't recall whether Mister Paisley actually used the word order, is that correct?
Let me refer to my report to see what I wrote.
You go, go ahead, take a look at page two.
So in premises entered, I wrote the ending of the, I wrote upon entry, we were greeted by a male later identified as Brian Paisley by his Hawaii State driver's license, who then sat investigator Conti and I and took our order.
Okay, and did Mister Paisley use the word order, you don't recall, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now in investig- did you review investigator Conti's report before you testified?
Not this day.
Is investigator Conti correct when he says that after you folks entered, that Paisley stated he would give me a sample of one hundred ninety proof alcohol to taste? Do you remember him saying that? Let me ask it another way, investigator Perez, did Mister Paisley tell you and investigator Conti that he would give you a sample of alcohol?
I do not recall that, sir, however, at the end of my.
Wait, I guess that's a yes or no, so you don't recall it being said, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, and then your testimony is that so you said you get this particular alcohol, now there was no menu there, right?
Yes.
There was no bottle to be taken, is that correct?
Yes.
There were no signs in the premises and we write about what was for sale?
Yes.
Okay, um in exhibit number C, there are no signs on the wall anywhere, right?
Correct.
And there are no signs indicating what food or drinks are for sale, is that correct?
Correct.
And there are no bottles in the front area, is that correct?
There is a bottle in the picture, sir.
Okay, and this is, let's see, uh next to the arcade.
Yes, sir, that bottle is hooked up to one of the vats that is being filled.
Okay, let me check. Okay. Now then, your testimony is Mister Paisley walked to the back, is that right?
Yes.
Came back with this green bottle, right?
Yes.
Was it the green bottle first or was it another another bottle?
He had that in his hand.
Okay, he poured the glass shown in exhibit number E?
Yes.
Right, and then he poured the shot glass, is that correct?
Yes.
And this was from another bottle, is that correct?
No, that glass came from the still that was depicted in one of the other photos.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay, now up to the point that this glass was poured and Mister Paisley told you how much this would cost?
He told us toward the end.
Right, so when you got this poured, right? Mister Paisley had not mentioned that it was gonna cost you a particular amount, is that correct? Am I right?
He told us how much the prices were.
Okay, he told you that at the beginning?
I do not exactly recall.
Right, because in your report, you don't mention anything about Mister Paisley telling you before this drink was poured, how much it would cost, is that correct? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, now, so the first drink gets poured and then you said Mister Paisley walked back and he got another, let's see, bottle from a vat in the back of the premises, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, so he walked to the, let's see. One of these containers that's shown in exhibit number C.
No, sir.
Okay, how far did he walk, where did he go?
Mister Paisley left us, went to this back portion where he's standing.
Yeah, right, he walked.
Then he went to this machine. Now in that back portion, these stills are located. This still right here was indicated by Mister Paisley that this is where the shot that was poured from came from.
For the record, you're looking at exhibit three F, is that right?
That's exhibit F.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's back up to exhibit number C, so your testimony is so Mister Paisley had to make a second trip back to the back of the premises, right?
Sir.
As shown in exhibit C, right? And in the back of the premises, that's where you find these three devices, is that correct?
Yes.
Now at the point that Mister Paisley walked back to get this stuff and he told you how much the alcohol was, he had not told you anything yet, is that correct?
To the SN memory yet, I cannot recall.
Cannot recall, right, because in your report, you actually said, if you look at the, let's see. Your report says you, okay, you can look at page two if you want, you entered the premises, right? See, that's right in the middle of the page, premises entered fifteen fifty-five, correct?
Yes.
You were greeted by Mister Paisley, correct?
Yes.
Then violation observed, Paisley explained the types of alcoholic beverages by many manufacturers and sales and investigator Conti ordered a shot of liquor, I ordered a glass of mead, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, and then Paisley poured the mead, right? At where investigator Conti and I were seated. And he explained that all the products were manufactured, right, and then he asked us to take a tour. Now you didn't mention the second trip to the back of the facility, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now let's take a look at exhibit number F. And you've indicated these are three stills, is that what Mister Paisley said these three pieces of equipment are?
Yes.
Alright, and he said that even the the item, this coffee maker like looking thing on the right, he called that a still?
Yes.
And he called the middle container a still?
Yes.
Okay, and you could see Mister Paisley from where you were seated filling the container up from the so-called still on the left-hand side of exhibit number A.
Yes, I saw him go back there.
But you couldn't see him filling the thing up, could you?
He walked back there empty-handed, came back with a glass filled with liquor.
Okay, now, I wanna make sure we understand each other, so your testimony now is you couldn't see Mister Paisley filling the thing up from anything in that, am I correct?
He was facing those stills.
Right, so you couldn't see, right? You couldn't see him filling it up.
He walked back there, he was facing the stills and he came back with a glass filled with the liquor.
Okay, but you didn't see Mister Paisley fill anything from a particular receptacle, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, we wanna make sure we get all the facts. And now Mister Paisley then walks back, right, to use. And Mister Conti fills this shot glass up, is that correct?
The shot glass was filled prior to his return.
Prior to his return, okay, so which which glass got filled first, the shot glass first or the wine glass?
The wine glass.
Okay, so your drink was filled first?
Yes.
The shot glass was second?
Yes.
Okay, so prior to the shot glass getting filled, then Mister Paisley say this particular liquor is going to cost X number of dollars.
Not at that particular time.
Okay. And uh so up to that point, there was no agreement as to how much you would pay for the liquor, is that correct? This is at the point prior to the shot glass getting filled up.
Yes, prior to sell, thus what the four examples.
Okay, but when Mister Paisley walked to the back, the wine glass was full, right, it was already filled, right?
Yes.
And uh the thing is, the only reason you didn't drink it is because you don't drink on the job, is that correct?
I do not, sir.
Okay, now, you've indicated that then Mister Paisley gave you a tour of the facility, is that correct?
Yes.
And he took you all the way to the back area, right?
Yes, sir.
And he showed you all all of the pieces of equipment?
Yes, sir.
And did you check to see if any of these things were in operation?
Yes, sir, he poured samples out of it.
Did you put that in your report anywhere, where in your report does it say you took samples from any one of these?
It wasn't samples for taste, he just poured it out showing that there's stuff in there.
Okay, and what did he pour it into?
That bucket that's on the ground.
This this bucket?
Yes, sir.
Did you take a sample of any of this stuff?
No, sir. That product was not what was sold to me.
Yes, but I mean you cited him originally for manufacturing on the premises, right?
Yes.
Illegally, so why didn't you take a sample of this product that you say was being made on the premises?
The section I cited was two eighty-one three, which is illegal sell manufacturer.
Sale or man- man- it's actually manufacture or sell, right? So you didn't analyze any of the liquid that you say was manufactured by any of the machines shown in exhibit number F, is that correct?
No, sir, sample was taken from the glass that was sold to me.
Okay, now, one more thing about the you have the equipment in the front, alright, was there any indication that any of this was in operation?
Yes, that bottle that you see to the left that looks pockets, Mister Paisley indicated that that bottle was being filled from those vats. Hoses went from where that bottle is, it kinda looks like a top and it goes to one of the vats.
This bottle next to the?
Yes.
Orkut?
Yes.
And your testimony is it shows that uh, let's see, it's hooked up to a hose?
It's hooked up to, it looks like a tap, but that system is hooked, has a hose that goes to one of the vats.
Did you take a sample from any of these containers?
Not those containers.
Okay, did um so you folks went to the back, how much time did you spend in the back?
Approximately five to ten minutes.
Were any of the three pieces of equipment plugged in?
Yes, they're all on.
They're all on, and how could you tell that?
There is condensation, there is noises coming from them.
And smells. Did you note that in the report anywhere?
No, sir.
You didn't, right? Okay, now, were there any other bottles of liquor in the back of the establishment?
I did not look into the refrigerator, so I didn't believe you.
But you didn't see any bottles outside in the back area, is that correct? Because otherwise you would have photographed, is that correct?
Yeah.
Were there any cases, were any of the boxes on the floor?
Not that I can remember.
Okay, and in terms of out in front, were there any bottles other than the one bottle that you say you can s- you can see near the container?
There is display which would have been set up on the wall to the right.
Okay, and did you take a photograph of that?
No, I did not.
Did you take a screenshot or a photograph of any of the websites that you looked at?
It was given to me in the investigative report by licensing, I did not serve this.
Did you attach the photos of the websites to the report?
No, sir.
Okay, and uh at at some point, let's see, about half an hour, it came in. Then Mister, you gave Mister Paisley the fifteen dollars, is that correct?
He told me the glass cost ten and shot was five.
Now, according to investigator Conti's report, the statement that was actually the original one is at page three at the top, it says, I inquired as to the price that Paisley was selling his bottled products for and he stated that the hundred proof alcohol sold inside is a hundred dollars per bottle. Okay, now, he didn't specific on say any of this stuff. Okay, now, he didn't specific on say any of this stuff was for sale, did he? Says when it's sold, it costs. A hun- up to a hundred bucks a bottle, is that what he said?
That is a statement in investigator Conti's report, I cannot trust him.
So investigator Conti is not reporting it accurately then?
That's a question you need to ask investigator Conti, sir.
Okay, but from your standpoint, based upon what you recall, that statement is not accurate then?
Sir, again.
Objection, that's a misstatement, is.
I'm gonna allow the response, but, um, Mr. Quata, uh, just, um. Request that you not be duplicative at some of your kind of questions.
I, uh, thank you, and I appreciate that, you know, we're running out of time, so I only have a couple more, then, okay? Okay, and, uh, if if, uh, you get a bill for this, our check?
Mr. Paisley verbally told us the price that each glass cost, the total amount. At that point, I gave him fifteen dollars, which he stated it cost, there is no sales receipt given.
Right, and then at that point, you said you're liquor commission, is that correct?
Yes, cash was handed to Mr. Paisley, concluding the sale.
He handed it in, right?
Yes.
And then you said, I'm with the liquor commission?
Yes, sir.
He didn't tell you wait? Take it back?
He, at no point did he return the money to me.
He didn't put it on the table?
He didn't give it back to me.
Oh, but did he put it on the table?
Again, I was not given possession of that cash that was paid.
Okay, that wasn't the question, the question was, did Mister Paisley put the money on the table?
Sir, what Mister Paisley did with the cash is, when Mister Paisley, I do not exactly recall, but the cash was not given in return.
Okay, so you don't recall if Mister Paisley put my cash on the table, you don't recall this?
Sir, at that point, I was more focused on making sure I secured the evidence and issuance of the citations.
Okay, and so no, you don't recall if Mister Paisley put my cash on the table, correct?
Sir, again, my point and focus at that time was issuance of the citations to Mister Paisley.
Okay, that's it, yeah, I'm done with that, yeah.
I think we, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, okay, nothing further, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Neely, any redirect?
Um. So. How were you made? How were you aware that the liquor was for sale?
From what, Mister? Through conversations with Mister Paisley. And information that was handed from licensing section through their investigative report.
So didn't Mister Paisley tell you the liquor was for sale, there was liquor for sale?
Through, yes.
Um, I I have nothing further.
Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions on this report?
Yes, I I have a couple of questions, so let's go to, uh, exhibit A. And in in exhibit A, let's go to, uh, exhibit B, so for the record, this is exhibit three D. Alright, so let's go to page, uh, D. Right, okay, that is a picture of Mister Paisley.
Yes, sir.
Pouring alcohol. In what was assumed, uh, which was tested to be alcohol into that glass, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On page E. The next page. Is that the same glass?
Yes, sir, same glass.
On the tables, along with a, is that an empty shot glass?
No, sir, there is actually liquid in that glass.
There's liquid in there, okay. And let's finally go to exhibit one. That is. On, uh, yeah, exhibit one, uh, picture of the, is that I, okay, I.
Oh, I, yeah.
Picture of the currency? The United States currency?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you put, and you paid that to Mister Paisley?
Um, this was monies that was given for this to make the purchase, and from this monies was the fifteen dollars I was giving.
Yes. Fifteen dollars out of bed to Mister Paisley.
Mister Paisley, yes, sir.
He accepted the money.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Um, let's take a short recess.
So, um. Now back on the official record, she, the commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Neely, do you have another witness?
I do, uh, just Peter Leroy Conti.
Oh, excuse me, prior prior to proceeding, I just wanna, I wanna be clear on this, there's something that I that I have.
Yes.
And I'm compelled to say, uh, Mister Kawata.
Yes.
I expect this to proceed in a respectful manner, really.
Yes.
Um, I I don't like where it leads and how we attack people's personal, that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That does, I would appreciate if you could acknowledge that and and count on merits and just keep it in a very peaceful tone.
I understand. Yes, and I acknowledge that, and that I probably got carried away on that, I really do.
I've been here for five years and I have never. And I don't think it's necessary, so before we bring the next witness or any witness forward, I don't think that. I think we can be effective in other ways and manners and not in, uh, disrespect.
Understood, and I I I wanted you to know that, you know, I didn't mean to disrespect anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, and let me, let me remind you, Mister Kawata, we are an administrative commission, this is not a court of law.
Yes. Understood.
I wasn't very appreciative of the way you, your attack on investigator.
Understood.
Perez.
Yeah, and and again, on that note, and I'm aware of that now, my apologies, I intend to apologize.
Uh, you should have been aware aware of that a long time ago because you've appeared many times. And you've also had previous adjudication matters.
Yes, understood, and acknowledged.
Okay, thank you. Can we proceed now?
Okay, can I call Mister Conti?
I swear you in, do you swear that the testimony you gave today is held to be truthful, to the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Leroy Conti Junior.
And what is your occupation?
My occupation, my current occupation is a liquor control investigator.
And how long have you had that job?
Uh, since April of two thousand eighteen.
Were you assigned to investigate Paisley Midery?
Yes, I was.
When did you conduct this investigation?
Uh, April third, two thousand eighteen.
And, uh, what were you assigned to investigate?
Uh, at the initial onset, I was asked to, uh, go in a undercover capacity. Uh, to ascertain whether there was a manufacturing and or selling of, uh, alcohol without a license at thirty-six, uh. Uh, Hotel Street.
Yes, correct, that's, well. I I believe is the address of?
Thirty-six North Hotel.
Nor- it would be north King Street, is where Paisley.
I'm sorry, King Street, yes, sorry.
Um. Okay, so please tell us what happened once you arrived at the premises?
Uh, once I arrived at the premises, uh, I was met by a gentleman. Who subsequently let later identified himself as Brian Paisley. Uh, initially, I did not know who this individual was, I asked him what kind of place this was, and he said. Uh, it was an establishment and he was proprietor of this establishment. I subsequently asked him, uh, what kind of drinks does he have in there, and he says, well, what do you want? And I said, what do you have, and he said, uh, he has wine, beer, or a hundred ninety proof green alcohol.
Um. Did, uh, Mister Paisley indicate that these alcohols were for sale?
Yes, he did.
Did he tell you prices of these alcohols?
Yes, he did.
At at this time when you entered?
Not at the time that I entered, he didn't give me the prices when I entered.
What was his demeanor when you spoke with him?
Uh, he was quite a jovial person, I think he was very proud of his establishment, very proud of his, uh, his abilities.
Um. Okay, so what hap- happened after Mister, what what happened after Mister Paisley told you what alcohol, alcohol?
Uh, he invited us, he invited myself and, uh, uh, investigator Perez in, asked us to have a seat. At which time, uh, he asked us if we'd like to try some of his samples. And so, uh, at that particular point, uh, he went and got one of his items and brought it back to the table for us.
Okay, um, what items did he, what item did he bring back?
Uh, to my recollection, it was the, uh, bottle containing some sort of, uh. Amber type alcoholic beverage, I wasn't sure what it was, and all I know is he said he made it.
Um. And did you, did he bring anything else?
Yes, he did, he he, uh, he actually bought, and this was something I was very proud of, he bought this, uh, shot glass. He went in the back and came back out with a shot glass with, uh, something he purported to be a hundred ninety grains, uh. A hundred ninety proof green alcohol.
Okay, so he, um. Did, so what did you observe when you received this shot of alcohol?
Well, initially, I just observed him go in the back and, uh, go into the back of this establishment. And when he came back out, he had this this shot glass with this clear substance in it. Uh, he set that on the table, he also poured, uh, from a bottle, like I said before. This, uh, amber colored, uh, substance, which he purported to be, uh. His of his making, whether it was wine or beer, I'm not really sure. I I wouldn't wanna say for sure, but it was something that he purported to be an alcoholic beverage. Uh, and then he asked me to taste it.
Okay, he asked you to taste which one?
Initially, uh, I tasted the green alcohol. It was a hundred and ninety proof, according to him. Uh, prior to tasting the, uh, green alcohol, I had the, I took the liberty to smell it. And as I smelled it, it had a very strong alcoholic beverage type smell to it. It had a chocolate, chocolate honey type, uh. Aroma to it. When I told Mister Paisley, uh, that, uh, this actually smelled. Like green alcohol, I said, it's almost, almost like that. Uh, he was quite quite proud of that, and he said, well, that's what it is, and so I took a sip. And upon taking a sip of this green alcohol, uh, I told him, I said, you know, this tastes. Almost like, uh, the hundred and eighty proof Everclear, which is normally sold on the east coast. And the only person that would know, you know, you'd have to be somewhere on the east coast to know that green alcohol or Everclear is green alcohol. And he subsequently stated that, uh, yes, it's the same thing except for mine's is a hundred ninety proof.
Um. Okay, so did Mister Paisley show you any other part of the premises?
Well, prior prior to that, uh, he asked me to, or he wanted us to taste the, uh. Other champagne glass of this amber colored alcohol, which I did, and I explained to him that it wasn't as strong as the green alcohol. That I had taken a sip of, and from that point, he asked, uh, would I like to see the process? Uh, of how he mixes alcohol, and I said, yes, so he took me in the back. Uh, and proceeded to explain the process that he goes through. Of course, when he started to explain process, that was probably a little bit too much for me to understand because of that, that I'm not privy to that kind of information. But, uh, he did show me the process and, uh, stated that it's quite easy to make them. He uses different materials to get a different, uh, flavor in his alcohol.
Uh, did Mister Paisley tell you, uh, how much the drinks you and investigator Perez ordered?
Uh, yeah, he gave me the price, uh, I asked, what was it, what did it cost, and he told me the. A bottle of green alcohol would cost a hundred dollars, approximately a hundred dollars. The amber colored, uh, drink that we had on the table was ten dollars and the shot glass of. What he purported to be a hundred ninety proof green alcohol was five dollars.
And did you or investigator Perez, uh, pay, pay for these drinks?
Uh, investigator Perez paid for the drinks.
Do you know how much he paid?
Uh, fifteen dollars total.
And did Mister Paisley accept this money?
Yes, he did.
Uh, at what point did you inform Mister Paisley that you and investigator Perez were liquor commission passengers?
After investigator Perez paid Mister Paisley. Uh, I told Mister Paisley, uh, something to the effect that, uh. He had a really nice establishment here, however, unfortunately, uh. I had to inform him that I was, uh, an investigator for the liquor commission, and so was Mister Perez.
And what was Mister Paisley's response?
His response was, oh, I guess I'm gonna get a a ticket now, something to that effect, a citation ticket. And I said, yes, yeah.
Did you write a report about this incident?
Yes, I did.
Um, I'm showing you exhibit two, can you describe what this is?
That is my report that I wrote, a regards to this total message.
Okay, and is this a report, uh, kept in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes, it is.
Uh. Okay, so if you turn to page two of the report. Or actually, let's go to page three, um. When we're under the heading cost factor. Um, can you, can you read what this is?
I inquired as to the price that, uh, Paisley was selling his bottled products for, and he stated that the one, a hundred ninety proof. Uh, alcohol sold as high as a hundred dollars per bottle. The champagne glass of the alcoholic beverage that he served us was ten dollars and the shot glass of the hundred ninety proof alcohol he served me was five dollars.
Um. Okay. Did all that you testified to occur in the city in Trump's economy?
Yes, it did.
Uh, nothing further at this point.
Mister Quata?
Hey, thank you. Okay, investigator Conti, is everything that you put in your report true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Okay, now, on page two of your report, exhibit number two, look up in the first section, establishment entered. Okay, so you folks arrived at about three fifty-five P M, correct?
Correct.
And you remember what day of the week this was?
No, I don't.
Okay, now, when you got there, you came inside, was anybody else inside?
No, uh, initially, no, there wasn't.
Okay, other people came in later?
Only one.
Okay, and was the person there the whole time that you were there?
Uh, no.
And how long did the person stay?
Uh, actually, he was there after we left, in fact, it, to my recollection, which I didn't put in my report. Was the fact that this person either was an employee of or somebody that he knew that had worked in the helping of making. Uh, such material, I'm not, I'm not really sure, he was very friendly with the person though.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you didn't see any, any, this other person concerned, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Was the person served anything?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, and the person was where when you folks were having this discourse, was he sitting at a table, walking around, how did that?
Actually, he came in, uh, he went to the back, and then he came, he went to the back, he came back out, uh, about midway. And if you look at, I believe, one of the photos that's there, he was sitting across from me, uh, at the table, and he was facing toward the door.
Okay. Okay, sticking to page two of your report, uh, you indicated that the male you later identified, this is the second paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
As Brian Paisley, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then Paisley, the first thing that happened is he stated that he would give you a sample of a hundred ninety proof alcohol, is that correct?
I didn't, I don't, uh, yes, he did say a sample of a hundred ninety proof alcohol, yeah.
And he said he was giving it to you taste, is that correct?
Yes.
And at this point, he didn't tell you how much it cost?
No, he did not.
And he didn't tell you he you had to pay for it, correct?
Not at, no, not at that point.
And, uh, investigator Perez was standing where, right next to you?
Uh, he was sitting next to me.
And was he talking at all?
Uh. To the best of my knowledge, I believe I was doing probably more of the talking, sitting at the table.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so then Paisley, after, you know, you said you wanted a taste, I guess he went back. To the back of the establishment, and he came back with this shot glass and the bottle, is that correct?
Okay, first of all, I didn't say I wanted a taste, Mister Paisley asked me if I would like a taste, and I said I would try it.
Okay. Correct. And you said, okay, I got it. And then Mister Paisley went to the back of the establishment, comes back, right?
Yes.
And at up to the point that that the shot glass got poured, was there any discussion of you paying for this?
Uh, at the moment, no.
Okay, was, were there any menus on the table?
Uh, no, there wasn't any menu that I remember, and I don't think. That I brought that portion up.
Okay, and was there anything on the wall which indicated? Okay, was there anything on the wall which indicated that either food or beverages or alcohol was for sale?
Uh, quite frankly, at this point, I, I can't recall.
Okay. Now then, Mister Paisley pours you the shot glass, right? Then you talk about this discussion about, you know, it appeared to be a little strong.
Uh huh.
Alright, and you tried it, put it back down. Did you drink the whole shot?
No, I didn't because uh I took a sip out of it and it was really, it burned a pop in my palate and so it was a little too strong for me. But I did recognize it as the fact of being some sort of alcoholic beverage.
Right, okay, now, you know, in the photograph, yeah. Is there any left in the shot glass?
Oh, yeah, it definitely is.
Well, the ver- that very bottom of it.
Um, I know. Uh, actually, if you look, you can see the line. He didn't pour it all the way to the top.
I see.
And you can see it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're looking at exhibit three E.
Yes, correct, thank you.
So you can still see, you can see where my hand is located, you can still see that uh it's actually halfway full. In fact, the, the sip I took, the glass wasn't completely full when he poured it.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, so now and then eventually the second glass got filled, is that correct?
Yes.
You know, I thought, and how did Mister Paisley get this second glass? Did he walk all the way to the back again?
Uh, no, he didn't. I don't believe he did walk to the back. I believe the bottle was either on the side uh somewhere close by, but he didn't have to go all the way in the back to get it, yeah.
Okay, was the bottle open? Did he have to open it?
Uh, you know, sir, I was fixated on the grain alcohol and so I wasn't really paying that much attention.
Right, and in your report, you didn't, you didn't write anything about how this other alcohol, right?
Actually, no, I didn't. Uh and my reasoning for that was
Can I interject here? Mister Colata, I am, I'm confused as to this line of questioning. Can you get to it, please? Um, are you, are you trying to okay, are you trying to establish that this alcohol appeared out of nowhere?
No, no.
Okay, can we stop talking about where is Mister Paisley walking back and forth, please, and get to your point?
I will. Okay, so up to the point that the second glass arrived at the table, was there any discussion about the cost of the liquor?
At that point, no.
And Mister Paisley hadn't told you, you would have to pay for it?
Uh, at that point, no.
Okay, now, at some point, did you and Investigator Perez go to the back of the shop?
Yes, we did.
And uh you looked at the equipment as shown in exhibit F?
Yes.
And Mister Paisley explained to you how it worked?
Absolutely.
And were you able to tell if any of this equipment was in operation?
Uh, actually, yes. Uh, one of those, he actually poured uh alcohol from.
Which one?
That, I, if I'm not mistaken, if you look on that exhibit F, it would have been the last one.
On the left?
On the left.
Okay, and you were standing there when it come?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay, and what did it get poured into?
Uh, right, at that point, I, I don't really remember. I just remember he poured something into
Into some container?
Yeah, in some container. It wasn't a lot, but he poured some into some container.
Did you folks keep any of that liquid for analysis?
Which
Might I just object that the charges for sale of alcohol, it actually doesn't include manufacture, so.
Okay.
You can continue your question.
Okay.
The objections are over.
Okay, go ahead and answer that question.
What was your question again?
The question was, you know, this alcohol, the, the liquid that came out of apparatus on the left hand of exhibit number four. Did you or Investigator Perez keep a sample of that?
No, we didn't.
Okay. And how could you tell that this apparatus on the left side of exhibit F was operational?
Based on my knowledge, I couldn't. I had to take the word of the proprietor at that particular time and he was the one that was explaining it to me. I had no, no reason to believe that he would deceive me uh at the point of him believing that I was a customer there.
Okay. Was there any other indication that either one of the other two pieces of equipment was in operation?
Uh, again, sir, I'm not uh, I'm not a professional. I have no knowledge of how this, how alcohol is produced. Uh, and so I had to go on his expertise. And at that time, he purported that everything was in operation. So again, I, I listened to him and took him to face out.
Was there any indication from the smell of the room that anything was in operation?
There was a strong smell of alcoholic beverage emitting from several of the machines. But again, uh that was evident walking in the back.
Okay, was there any other uh equipment that you were shown that was located in the establishment at any point?
Uh, yes, and I'm not sure if it's here. There was a uh there was a huge vat that was in the front of uh
Exhibit, take a look at C.
This uh plastics, the plastic vat, and that's exhibit C.
The white one?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was fermenting at the time. I saw that was fermenting at the time, so.
Were you able to sample anything from that?
No, sir, I wasn't.
Okay. What about the other two pieces of equipment?
Again, that was all part of his equipment, but uh I had no opportunity to ascertain whether there was anything inside it or to taste it to see if there was uh anything of alcoholic beverage at all.
Okay, alright, no further questions.
Is there any redirect?
Uh, no, no, nothing further.
Thank you, questions, do you have any questions for the witness? Thank you, you're excused. Uh, Mr. Lee, do you have any other witnesses? You're excused, thank you.
I do not, no.
Uh, Mister Colata, do you have witnesses?
Just Mister Paisley.
Okay, can we, please swim in?
Do you swear that the test when you give today, you want to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Paisley, let's see, what's your, state your full name and address for the liquor.
Uh, Brian Paisley, uh two one three nine McKinley Street, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight two six seven.
And do you have a position with Paisley Mary Lee?
Currently, I do not.
And why is that?
Um, there's no money flow to afford anybody to work there. Uh, the work that I was uh helping to do to put the place together is done. It's no longer required from your own.
Okay, but you're aware that there's an application pending for a liquor license, is that correct?
Yes.
Mister Colata, at the present, at the time of the violation, and let's not talk about what's pending.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mister Paisley, you're aware of the citation that occurred on April third, two thousand eighteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what were you doing on the premises?
Um, I was still fitting the equipment, placing it, uh and preparing for the place to be in operation as assuming that we got the license.
Okay, and you were at that time working for the company?
I was.
While not getting paid, I think.
That's correct.
Okay, and uh at the time, was the company, or the establishment selling alcohol?
No.
Okay, tell me what mead is, tell the commission what it is.
Uh, mead is uh the form of fermenting honey uh to an alcoholic beverage. Uh, to include any other forms of uh fruits that can be added, including grapes as long as it uh includes more than fifty percent of honey. And that is standard definition for mead.
Okay, now, on this particular day, I mean, would you folks at that time sell any food?
Not really. No, we didn't really have a kitchen set up. There wasn't, um if you wanted to hold an event there or uh come for a tour to, you know, see what we're doing, cause they're interested, that was all.
Okay, now, I asked you to load up your Yelp site, right? There, you do be folks who have it on.
Yes, Paisley Meaderie does have Yelp site.
Alright, and were you advertising that you were selling alcohol?
Yelp's not for advertising, which is sell. Yelp is for those who come in to give a review of uh their experience. So it's, it's not a sales site, it's a, it's a review site.
Okay, and what, what kind of services or products were you providing on April third, two thousand eighteen?
Uh, nothing for sale.
Okay, and did you post anything on the web, on the Yelp site that's used for sale?
No, there's nothing posted on Yelp site for sale.
Okay, now, you recall the two investigators that came to testify?
Yes.
And you recall they came to the establishment at about three fifty-five, five P M?
I recall that they came to the establishment.
Tell the commission what happened after they came?
Um, two gentlemen, uh they came to my door. I greeted them. Uh, I asked them, you know, what they were here for. And they said they were interested in finding out more about my establishment. So I, I invited them in. I told them a little bit about what mead is, the fact that uh we were hoping to open sometime during the year and that we would be the only meaderie in Honolulu. I explained to them that uh it was, they asked, you know, where it was gonna be produced. And so I, I explained that it was gonna be produced on premise. And I offered them a tour of the facility to show them what we do and, and how it was to be done. And uh
They stopped for once. At the time, were you in the, had you been offering tours of the facility?
Absolutely, yes.
And you had done this prior to April third, two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay, is that something that was noted on the Yelp site?
Uh, that's what uh people who made reviews were noting on the site, that they took a tour.
Okay, now, I want to direct your attention to exhibit number F. Okay, and you're familiar with what these items are?
Absolutely.
Okay, and can you tell the commission what the items are?
Um, the item on the far left of the picture is a uh not completely finished, being assembled uh reflux fractioning stick. Followed by the black container in the center is uh, it's considered a bright tank. It's made for pressurization of uh a liquid to give a carbonation. And it's uh covered in a uh neoprene uh blanket so that it uh would be insulated. And it's also not in operation. It's got a plastic cap at the bottom. You can't even hold liquid at the moment. And the one on the far right is a um coil heater, so it's an electric heater. You can heat anything, so you can produce coffee, you can produce tea. But it's also an automated uh system that if you had grain or something else to which you wanted to convert it to a sugar, you can do so. It's called mashing. Um, and that is uh let's see, what else is in there? Uh, that's it? Oh, excuse me, the stainless steel portion at the top of the black one belongs to the machine on the far right. Uh, it is a straining basket for teas and things like that, if you wanted to do that.
Okay, are, do you plug these devices in?
Uh, the one on the far left and the one on the far right are uh, would be plugged in. The one in the center, it doesn't do anything. It's just a standing tank.
Okay, now, I know you may have alluded to this one. Okay, these were, this photo was taken on April third by the investigators, right?
Correct.
Were any of these items operational on April third, two thousand eighteen, when the investigators were on the premises?
The uh, the one on the far right was plugged in, uh and it was uh full of water, being heated.
And what was it used for?
It's used for making tea or coffee, uh for any guests that uh would like some, or for myself.
Okay, what about the item in the middle? Was that operational?
No, no, it's not.
Okay, and how can you tell it's not operational?
Um, at the bottom, you'll see a little white cap you can't see through. Uh, that is to simply, it's like a cover to keep things from getting in the inside. Um, there's uh a pivot up the center that's got numbers on it. If it had anything in it, you'd actually see a dark color at a level to show you how much was in it if there was anything.
So there was no liquid in it at the time?
No, no.
See, between the black unit and the, what do you call this, the water here?
Yeah.
There's a brown unit there. What is that?
Uh, that is a counterflow chiller. And what that is, is you'd have to hook up a bunch of uh hoses. Uh, one to run uh cool water through it and counterflow to the hot water or hot liquid, whatever it may be in order to cool it down to a temperature to which you can handle it or otherwise.
And so which, which equipment does this unit relate to?
It would relate to the unit on the far right.
Right here?
That's correct.
Okay, and so when it's, why it doesn't have the hoses hooked up, that is it operational?
No, it's not operational.
Okay, what about the still on the far left? Was that operational time the investigators were there?
No, it was not.
And is there a way you can tell that it's not, it wasn't operational?
Uh, one of which, there's uh the plug that's on it is not plugged in. And the hosing, you would see condensation on the floor from anything leaking on the floor.
Okay, did you, you know, one of the investigators talked about you removing something from this particular still, is that true?
If you were distilling, it would come through the top of the still and it would come out as a drip. You don't pour anything from a still. You allow a still to distillate or concentrate an alcohol being removed from another liquid in drop, droplets. You don't actually pour from it.
So it wouldn't come out all at once then?
No, it wouldn't.
Was, is there any container here to catch any of the condensation?
No.
Okay, was there any other equipment in the back of the shop that was operational at the time?
No.
But there are any other bottles in the back of the shop that maybe were used at the time?
We didn't have any bottles on premise at the time.
Other than what was used to pour for these people?
That's right.
Directing your attention to exhibit number C. And I'm directing your attention to these containers that the investigators, Perez, off the bottle. Are these container stills?
No, they're not.
Are they used to manufacture alcohol?
Uh, they can be used in the fermentation process.
Were any of them operational at the time?
No, they were not.
Okay, now, take a look at the white, semi-clear one. Right, is it, does it have a liquid in it?
It does.
And what kind of liquids in it?
It is a mixture of P V W and water.
What's P V W?
It's a powdered brewery wash.
Okay, and why were you, did you have powdered brewery wash?
Uh, we had just received the tank. And prior to leaving it set, you usually have to wash out whatever kind of yucky gunk is in there. Uh, so what you do is you'll fill it up and you'll have the powdered brewery wash. And you'll let it sit for a couple of days to uh pull out any of the chemicals you normally find in plastics that are harmful, including H D P E, which that's made of. Uh, then you'll drain it and you'll fill it back again with uh water a few times to um rinse it out. And at that point, you can spray it out with sanitizer or fill it with sanitizer, cap it off to ensure that it doesn't get any type of infections that would seep into the plastic.
Did you take any liquid out of this container?
No, I did not.
And serve it to either investigation?
No.
Okay, what are the other two items?
Uh, there's two more plastic tanks on the right. Um, those are just empty tanks. They're just sitting there. And the one in the center that's silver is uh a very large version of a bright tank. We discussed that black one in the, in the previous exhibit. Same thing, just much larger.
And was this full of anything?
No, it was not.
Was any of the equipment operational at that time?
No, we didn't have any materials to produce at the time, so it wouldn't be an operational time.
Okay, and what kind of materials do you use to produce alcohol?
Water, honey, and yeast.
Do you do grain alcohol?
I do not. We don't make beer.
Okay, take a look at, there's a, a bottle next to the orchid.
I see it.
What was that bottle doing there?
It was a display bottle.
Is it hooked up to any of the equipment there?
No, it's not.
Okay, did it have anything in it?
No, it's just sitting on the table there next to the orchid.
It's, so it's empty?
It's empty.
Okay, I almost spent a lot of time on this, but okay, so that they walked in and we have this discussion, right? Did you ask for money?
I did not ask for money.
Is there any menu on the premises?
There was no menu.
Did you tell them you're selling alcohol?
Absolutely not.
And what did you tell them in terms of providing alcohol?
Well, after I gave them a tour, I told them that they could have a sample if they were to try it.
So you did the tour first?
Yes, that's customary for anybody that's came in. There's no point in offering somebody something to drink if they don't know what it is. So kind of the point of, of being open at the time when we were, outside of putting it together, was an educational and buzzfeed experience. Okay, a little hype going for what may be to come for those that are interested and those who have no idea what it is, to educate them on what it is.
Okay, so then, at what point did you offer this sample?
Uh, after the tour, they uh were asking me a few questions. I said, you know, if you'd like, I can offer you a sample of what uh we're expecting to be producing. And I had them sit at the uh table in exhibit C that you have there, where this is an empty glass. And I offered them a taste of the two types of uh samples that I, as a home brewer and former professional had on hand.
When did you produce the stuff that you used as a sample?
Years ago, uh and under my previous license at Pacific Years ago, uh, and under my previous license at Pacific Breach here in Honolulu.
Okay, when were you in business?
Uh, two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen.
Okay, you kept some of the product?
Yes, I did.
Did you manufacture any product at this location?
No, there was no product being manufactured at this location at all.
Prior to April four?
Uh, prior to taking a lease at all, we haven't manufactured anything on premise.
Okay. Now, you know, this practice of sampling anything, giving out samples, did you stop that after this incident on April three?
Yes, I did.
And you're not contesting the fact that you served alcohol?
Not at all.
Okay. You just wanted the commission to know you didn't manufacture all the products?
That's correct.
Okay, tell me how the payment came about, tell us, tell the commission.
Um, the investigators were sitting at the table after the samples and Mr. Conti sampled his, told me how strong it was for him and uh I think, I believe Perez, since I met him today, uh, he took a sip and then uh he kinda turned away for a second. And then uh, they asked me, well, you know, what do we owe you? And I told them that you don't owe me anything, the samples. And they said, well, if we were, if we were to buy it, how much would this cost? I told them that our pricing estimate at the moment was gonna be about ten dollars a glass or five dollars a shot, uh, if we were selling it. And um, if I remember right, Mr. Conti pulled out money and I said, no, there's no need to pay me. Because, you know, it's not for sale. So he sat it on the table and told me, well, you know, I gotta give you something for your time. I said, well, that's really not necessary, but thank you. Uh, at the moment that it was laid on the table, uh, they identified themselves as a liquor commission and uh asked me for my driver's license. And I asked, you know, exactly why I would be receiving citation because I'm not selling anything, like, well, you've just received money. So I uh, in protest, gave them my information, cooperated with them and sought out legal help.
Okay. I have nothing for it, please leave.
Um, so you were, you were the proprietor of Paisley Meaterie on April third, twenty eighteen, correct?
Not correct. That's correct. I was not a proprietor of Paisley Meaterie.
What was your position?
I am the
What?
Well, I am the founder of Paisley Meaterie, but at the moment, at the, at that time, I was facilitating, putting things together as a meat master and somebody who understands the facility, helping put things together for the others who own it in anticipation of a license to which I can be employed for doing a job to produce alcohol or paisley meaterie.
So your testimony is that you did not sell any alcohol at the premises in twenty eighteen?
That's correct.
You seem familiar with your Yelp page and, do you read year-long reviews?
Sometimes.
So you must be aware that from February twenty eighteen through July twenty eighteen, there are reviews saying, we bought alcohol, meat costs ten dollars, shots cost five dollars?
There's not a single one that says that I bought a ten dollar shot of alcohol on my Yelp page. And it's not my Yelp page, it's Paisley Meaterie's Yelp page. It does say that a lot of people had a great time.
The comments, the responses are from you. I mean, you personally respond on behalf of Paisley Meaterie.
Uh, it is up to the proprietors of Paisley Meaterie to respond to those. Uh, when I have access, I can, uh, usually. I, I don't even have anything in front of me that says uh that there is a response.
Okay, you also deny manufacturing any alcohol on premises?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I don't have anything.
Can we redirect Mr. Claudio?
Oh.
Commissioners, you have any questions for the witnesses?
I have a couple of questions. Um, Mr. Paisley, you stated that um Yelp is simply a review site, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
You also stated, and you asserted to this commission that you're not selling any food or any alcohol?
I am not selling any food or any alcohol.
So what are all these people reviewing then? You are not selling anything, then what are they reviewing?
After the citation had came in from uh April until, I believe it was July, we were serving food. I had a kitchen, um, I helped put together a menu for food. I also helped set up some special events to uh draw crowds in. After all, it's not cheap having a lease and uh since I am part of the company as the founder, I do have an interest in seeing my dream that I have sold to somebody else come true. So I have stayed on to help at various events and times.
That didn't answer my question. And I would like to remind you, hold on, I would like to remind you that you did swear an oath here to tell us the truth. I would also like to remind you that we have access to the internet. So I would remind you of the oath that you took. So, my question is, if you are not selling anything, what are these people reviewing on Yelp?
They're reviewing an experience for tours and coming in for, for food.
Okay. That you aren't selling, right?
From July, uh, from April until July, we were selling food, we haven't had any business whatsoever from July forward.
No further questions?
I have a question. So, uh, Mr. Paisley, your lease has been executed from October twenty seventeen. Um, so from October twenty seventeen to April third to the violation, what have you been doing in an occupied space?
Uh, from October until January, there was construction going on. There was a renovation, the former occupant, Cuties Cafe, left a huge mess. And uh, there was tons of uh electrical that had to be properly done.
So it wasn't occupied, so you, from October twenty seventeen to January twenty eighteen, nothing was being performed there. There were, you, you weren't occupying the space, you guys weren't doing anything at all there.
Well, we occupied the space to do construction, but that's the only thing that was happening from October until January.
Okay. Um, you know, when you executed this lease, your use of premise in your lease was to manufacture retail sales of wine, beer, and champagne at the time when you executed the lease?
Correct.
So I'm assuming that was your intent?
Uh, correct.
Right? And then you did a amendment to the lease in which included dancing or on behalf of your business or Mr. Simpson or whoever it is decided to amend the lease effective January or December twenty nine, twenty eighteen, after applying for the license.
Uh, I believe that was at the request of the liquor commission to not only remove my name from the lease, but add from the investigator's report to include those items uh in the report to allow serving food and uh type uh, type of production to the lease, to be uh specific.
Do you have any reason why the landlord would request for you to get liquor liability insurance if you're just manufacturing?
Uh, because they are aware that uh if you're selling liquor, that there's a liability and that is required by the liquor commission.
But in your initial lease, you had no intention of selling? Because your premise, your use of premise didn't allow you to sell onto there?
Even if you're manufacturing, I remember right, you require liquor liability insurance of a million dollars.
On manufacturing, on your equipment maybe, correct? Yeah, I got that, great. But on your, I just thought it, I thought it was convenient to point out, when you get liquor liability insurance, there's a questionnaire that goes with that as well and what your intent and purpose is. So it then asks you on li- liability, well, I'm assuming you filled it out or someone from your, from your facility or authorized would fill out that insurance form?
Yes.
So they would basically cover any occurrences or anything that would happen on the property?
Yes, absolutely.
I guess my, my line of questioning is more or less intent, which is the fine line, which is saying, let me, let me, let me withdraw that question. When investigator Perez offered you the fifteen dollars, what was your assumption, was that a tip? Was that for your time? What did you interpret that for?
Well, when I told him it wasn't for sale, he said, well, then, you know, how about for your time? So I interpreted it as he put money on the table, he gave me a tip.
Did you take the money?
I did not.
You left it there on the table?
It stayed on the table.
Do, who has control of your website?
A uh, just a moment, last I remember it was at Joe's Wagon Sales.
Okay, and they control on your open table as well?
Uh, no, open table is run by open table.
So you're aware, are you aware, I mean, since you run the whole social media and on the websites and you brought that up, are you aware on your website that you allow reservations and it already includes a pairing?
If you were to try to make a reservation, they would come through, it's not uh confirmable.
Right, but you suggest that in your website?
A suggestion of making a reservation is not a suggestion of sales. You can make a suggestion of, hey, make an appointment and when you come to that appointment
I guess that's, that's how you could do that, so you could say that, I could see it as blocking, you could say it is greatly different opinion, in other words. So when we are going on the website, is it not misleading or is it not to assume that that's the type of service that you provide, which is a pairing and it costs twenty dollars with a serving of meat? Is that not what we're doing here?
Putting something on a website and having it be a dead link means that whether it's there or not, nobody can actually make that appointment to come in. You may set them out to have something done. And then if you wanna change it later, it costs more. So when you tell your webmaster what you'd like done, he sets it all up. And that link doesn't work, it does, it doesn't matter if it's there, you can't actually make an appointment for a pairing, even if it does cost twenty dollars. And it doesn't say what that pairing is.
It doesn't say what the pairing is, what your twenty dollars is?
Yeah.
On your website?
It doesn't tell you what is exactly in the pairing.
Bookings are essential, tastings include one glass of meat, choice of your vegetarian, kosher, or standard pairing. Please choose your pairing selection at the time of your reservation.
And it's a dead link, you can't make a reservation.
Is there a reservation date so I can take a tour? Is that, that's what you're promoting, right?
You, you could uh come by and take a tour, but you can't make a reservation to do that.
Let me ask you another question.
You'd, you'd have to fall in and ask, just show up.
Since you weren't doing anything in the space, you just leave your doors open and people just walk by and ask out of curiosity, is that commonly how they discover you?
That's a lot of how they discover us, yes.
And they just happen to just be walking by and then it's, it's just hearsay and just if you wanna come in, take a tour?
A lot of the stories that I get, they walk, it's like, oh, I've been walking by your shop forever, I'm so interested in what is meat. Invite a lot of people, there's a lot of traffic, especially on Fridays.
So let me ask you this, prior to April third, how much tourings have you had in your facility? On, on an average, two a day, one a day?
Oh, I couldn't give it per day, sometimes you get ten or twenty people come by and sometimes you get nobody for days.
And so, with, you've also said that you, this bottle that you had came from your prior license that you had from two thousand eleven to twenty thirteen?
That's correct.
How much bottles do you have on stock or in your facility to tour, to facilitate these tours?
I actually don't have any, neither does Paisley Meaterie, they're out, I only had a few bottles.
So prior to that, then you had a couple bottles on site that could facilitate these types of tours or tastings?
That's correct.
And within those tastings, couple bottles from one with the sizable pour that I've seen in exhibits, um, that's a pretty, um, good size serving pour, yeah?
It's a three-ounce serving, yes.
So basically with a couple bottles, you could probably do maybe five tours to most of two people?
Well, that's if you're assuming a couple, meaning two, and I say, when I had a cup on hand, probably had twenty or thirty bottles worth that were personal.
So you have about twenty to thirty bottles on hand then?
They were personal property, yes.
Okay, so couple means twenty to thirty bottles?
Sure, we'll, we'll set it down.
All right, twenty to thirty bottles on site, where did you, in these exhibits here, where did you store those bottles? Is there a picture in here that has a refrigerator or something where you stored?
No. There's no picture that shows where it was stored.
Where were you storing it?
Um, I always had a couple bottles in the fridge, couple meaning two or three. And uh, the rest were just simply sitting in the window or on shelf.
Where is your fridge located?
Uh, adjacent to where the pictures were taken.
Okay, last question. Maybe two more questions, in this exhibit E right here, can you explain to me what this is behind here?
Yeah, those are two five-gallon jugs full of honey.
And one more question. You made mention about exhibit F that you have this uh coil heater that is used for tea or coffee. Did you offer the investigators tea or coffee at the time that they came in?
I did not.
Did you have any?
I did not.
But it was on?
Yes, the machine was on. Wasn't operating, but it was in the on position.
Prior to April third, have your patrons enjoyed tea or coffee at your facility?
Yes, they have.
In this huge capacity?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Paisley, did I hear correctly earlier that you testified on the oath that you did not have any product to manufacture alcohol on the premises as of April of two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
And that would include honey?
That would include honey that was used for manufacturing, that's right, those two five-gallon jugs are uh not going to be used for any manufacturing whatsoever. Not, it's for display because it came from contaminated hive, so it looks nice. But you wouldn't wanna make anybody sick with something that's got pesticides in it.
Uh, commissioners, any other questions for the witnesses?
Yes, um, one question, um, Mr. Claudio, you mentioned, in your representation, you mentioned that there was, there were no menus on site. Uh, my question, you know, about the Yelp reviews, how does the customers get pricing? Or how were they able to represent pricing in some of their reviews, was it by word of mouth or was there some other way?
Anything that was sold had a price from the inner menu, menus didn't come until later. So when there was something offered for food, there was a menu created at that time?
I, I'm, my question for you regardless of alcohol, not, not
alcohol hasn't been for sale, so there's no menu item or, or there's like
So there's no menu noting any alcohol sales?
That's correct.
Ever has been?
That's correct.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing I wanted to, if I could ask one follow-up to some of the questions that
Um, we're gonna, we, we've had questions and redirect Mr. Claudio, um, do you have any further witnesses?
No.
Given exhibits?
No.
Okay, um, I'd like closing arguments to be limited to three minutes, if you folks can please accommodate us with that?
Sure.
And you're not required to do the closing. Ms. Neely?
Um, just, there's overwhelming evidence that Mr. Paisley was manufacturing his own liquor on the premises on uh, both investigators have testified to it, we have pictures where Yelp reviews his own website showing alcohol. This was a violation of HRS section two eighty one.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Claudio.
Okay, thank you. Uh, members of the commission, this is, this was almost a plea of guilty with an explanation. Mr. You know, the allegations are serious, Mr. Paisley wanted to come forward and uh explain everything to you. If you, you folks, the opportunity of asking questions, I think he's come off as, I think candid and is able to answer the questions because his speaking can be truthful. And so for that, you know, I leave it to you folks, I do agree with Chairman Obama. We, we're not contesting the fact that, you know, liquor was provided, we're not contesting the fact that these people threw fifteen dollars at it. And uh, he has his explanation, we leave it to you folks. Uh, we wanted to come here and explain it because a matter of licensing before, I think it's important that the commission interface with Mr. Paisley and with management, so that you folks know what they're up, what they're doing, you know, where they're coming from, they wanted to let you know that you're complying with the law.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, we have a recessed to executive session to deliberate uh this matter.
Second, give me a second.
Uh, we don't need a motion, we do not need a motion, correct?
The mischief, look at the mischief, let me go. Okay. All right, we are back on the record, uh, commission, commissioners, do you have a decision on this matter?
Yes, Chair, based upon a preponderance of the evidence, this commission finds Paisley Meaterie Inc. is in violation of void by statute, section two eighty-one dash ninety-one. Ms. Neely, do you have a recommendation for a fine or some sort of action?
Um, the recommended penalty, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars, but as the commission is aware, it's had their discussion.
Okay, fine, thank you. Um, my motion is gonna be to impose a fine of two thousand dollars.
My second.
Then move the second, all of them favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. I vote aye. Uh, direct, uh, the Uh, agenda item number forty-three, partially intermediary, um, uh, to, a fine of two thousand dollars will be imposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's go back to uh the public hearing. Uh, calling agenda item number one. Okay, we can make that uh correction, uh, okay.
Yeah, make it now.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna amend my motion. I apologize to everyone.
The um finding of the commission is that based upon a preponderance of the evidence, the commission finds Paisley Beerery Inc. is in violation of void by statute, section two eighty-one dash three.
Second.
Move the second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion is carried.
Do we need to redo the motion?
Redo the recommended fine?
I don't think so.
No need?
No, okay.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move on to um agenda item number one. Application number one eight dash one three three two one from Paisley Beerery Inc.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioners, uh, Freddie Shaw, prepared with the effort of applicant, as well as Jake Simpson, President of Paisley Beerery.
Thank you. Mr. Aye?
Um, previously, we, uh, I have read into the record information with respect to uh fact that this matter had been continued from the December setting, public hearing kept open as well as uh protests and information relative to the preliminary hearing.
Thank you. Is there any others that would like to testify uh either for or against this matter? We have, for the record, we have one positive uh protest or testifier, excuse me. Uh, that being said, commissioners, questions or a type of action?
Yes, Chair, motion to deny application number one eight dash one three three two one.
Second.
Then move the second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three three two one is denied.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, um, we have uh Thank you.
Forty-four.
Calling agenda item number forty-four. Do we have any administrative matters?
No.
No. Calling agenda item number forty-five, election of chairperson for two thousand nineteen.
I move to elect, uh, Joseph O'Donnell as a chair for two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Then move the second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Um.
Do you accept?
Wait, okay.
Motion is carried, motion is carried.
Motion to adj-